Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I apologize that we were late. We're just coming out of executive session, but we have a fun night ahead of us with lots of recognitions. So let's get started. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Okay, thank you, Ms. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Costa. All in favor of the consent agenda? She's here. Are you cool, Karen? Yes, sir. That passes 8-0. Thanks so much. Okay, we're going right into recognitions. I was expecting to call them up for their speeches, but we're actually going first into GHS Senior Class President. Where are you, Javi? Come on down. Wait, you're not speaking yet. You're not, no, you're coming here.
Check, check.
Well, he gets his speech next. He comes back at the end again. That's right. Now, we're also going to recognize our Student Government President, Kwame. Oh, boy. Is that on now? All right. So you, all right, hold on. Let's put this mic behind so we can. There you go, Kwame. All right, so sorry. Miss, can you hear me? Yes, we missed that Javi is heading off to Harvard and Kwame, I think I remember you're going to Penn. So this is, we have two wonderful students who have done such great things for our schools and you have a great speech. Thank you so much. This is my, like, second favorite part of being on the board than the first one of graduation, which is, of course, happening on Thursday. So this is such a great way to end the year. Thank you both so much, and I know we're going to hear speeches from you in a moment, I hope. So that's perfect. Next up, we're doing our Spring Athletics Champions. And do we have Ms. Marchenko? Is she here? There she is. Great.
Thank you, Chairperson Stowe, and to Dr. Jones and to the members of the board for having us here tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the girls rugby program here at the high school, but I'm also here to represent student athletes who have had great success both in the winter and spring this school year. So I'd like to start first by recognizing boys track and field as FCAC champions this spring. So that's something that's wonderful. And now I'd like to move on to the students who made the, made All-State in their sports. So at this point, what I'd ask you to do is if you hear your name called, please stand, if you are in the audience, and please hold applause until we have everybody standing so we can recognize our student athletes for the winter and spring. So let's start with girls tennis, Courtney Sheet and Julia Tamis. If you're here, please stand up. Girls golf, Allison Bauer. Girls lacrosse, Emma Abazia, Sophia Nitzel. Boys tennis, Dylan Atkinson, Kai Jane, Nick O'Brien. Boys lacrosse, James Pilk, Matthew Trimmer, Charlie Zola. Boys swimming, Justin Jacob, Michael Delasha, Matthew Hake, Aiden Bukaria, Felix Flaxstad, Ryan G., Whitaker Grover, Keegan Clark, Andrew Diamond, Liam Flaherty, and cheerleading, Avery Banks, Lauren Civatilo, Sierra Rollins, Lindsay Sylvester, Grace Traeger. Boys ice hockey, recipient of the Connecticut Hobie Baker Award, Danny Prattley. Boys track and field, Andrew O'Donnell. Harrison Goldenberg, Jan-Luca Bianchi, Zachary Jelenik. Boys track and field, state open, Andrew O'Donnell. Girls indoor track, Esme Daplin, Haley Townsend, Olivia Eslava, Kayla Egan. And girls outdoor track, all New England, Esme Daplin and Caitlin Fay. If you are in the audience, please, everyone give them a round of applause. And because I am here to represent the girls rugby program, I'd like to take a few minutes of your time just to, to give you a little bit about them and to also recognize the accomplishments that, that they've really worked hard to achieve this season as well as in the last few years. So if, if you're not aware already, we have, for the first time, won the state championship this spring. And I want to thank not only all of you for supporting what we do, but specifically, I wanted to take some time to thank Ralph Mayo, who has been extremely supportive of what we're doing at the high school. Pete Giorgio has been absolutely amazing in supporting what we're doing, and he is absolutely on board with what, what we want to achieve and accomplish. Thank you to Joe Kelly and Mike Fina, former head coach of the boys program, of course, and Mike Fina, current invaluable resources and support to us as we've started our program and are growing. A personal thank you to Joe Patron and Lara Vivalo, my assistant coaches, who are just absolutely amazing to work with and, and a huge part of the reason we're successful. We, we had our first season in 2019. We've only been here a short while. In that season, we were fourth of six teams. We came in fourth out of six. 2020, we had a COVID year. 2021, we came in second of six. And here we are in 2022. We have 10 teams in the state now, and we came in first. And I think it's important for all of you to understand what we're doing with our program and what we aim to achieve. It is one of the few sports where no experience is necessary when you come to the high school. And in fact, in all of these years, I think we've had one come to us, she's sitting up here now, who came to us with experience prior to coming to the high school. Very unusual in sports in Greenwich High School and something that I think we can really capture a lot of athletes who might be missed otherwise and, and accomplish great things. And to that end, we have no cuts. Anyone is welcome. And as rugby as a whole is, so are we inclusive and welcoming of all. It's a sport that accepts all shapes, body types, people from all different places and walks of life. And there's a spot on the field for anyone who's willing to work hard and do the team thing. So it really is a very special sport. It means a lot to me. But I also think it can bring really good, continue to bring really good value to our students at the high school. But along with that as well, it is one of those rare sports where the supply at the high school level is much less than the demand at the college. So colleges need our athletes. And so, for example, we went to a tournament this last weekend, and the colleges are just dying to talk to our girls and make relationships. And for me, the key is to both teach these kids their life lessons, it's so much more than the sport, but to open doors for them. And so that's what I feel we're trying to accomplish, and that's what we're well on our way to doing for these kids. And I just feel like this is one way that if we can really keep doing what we're doing, we can really do that for our kids. So I will not take any more of your time, but I do want to just take, I will only take a minute more of your time. I do want to recognize my kids for all of their hard work and everything that they've accomplished. So I, I will, I will call out the, the names. If you are here, please stand. Faith Alexander, Fiona Brier, Sophie Citron, Katie Coyle, Ayana Davenport, Emily Dominguez, Ruby Garcia, Isabella Gega, Ruby Lampkin, Greer Levy, Alexa Mariscal, Kira Martin, Ivanka Marasak, Julia Montero, Kimberly Moracho, Lena Natali, Sid Natali, Janay Nevoat, Laura Olmstead, Julia Pallone, Emma Peck, Ally Perna, Natalie Rojas, Delilah Ruiz, Sophia Sikat, Grace Shelkai, Laura Smigoe, Ashley Torres Brown, Jesslyn Vera, Nicole Nguyen, Jocelyn Shingri, and Vera Sivilich. Congratulations, girls. Well deserved. And thank you again to the board for giving us this moment. They really earned it. Thank you.
They certainly did.
Yes.
Just want to let everyone know I had the honor of serving the state of Connecticut as the president of Connecticut Rugby, both boys and girls. And, and Erin served as the league director for the girls and did a fabulous job organizing the entire league. I had the honor and the, the pleasure of presiding over the state championship game and awarding the trophy to our team. What a match to watch. It was fantastic. Thank you for that. And in return, the state of Connecticut, I, with the power vested in me as president of the state of Connecticut, I, you are the girls rugby coach of the year for the state of Connecticut.
That was great. Thank you so much, Erin. Thank you, girls. This was great. Really appreciate you guys coming out. Next, we go to science. I like how we have a real diverse agenda in terms of our recognitions tonight. So 2022 Science Fair Awards. I believe Andy Bermonte is online.
Hi, how are you guys tonight?
Hey, thank you, Andy.
Let me share my screen here, hopefully get this right. Thank you, Chairperson Stowe. Thanks to the board of Ed and Dr. Jones for this wonderful opportunity to, to recognize these amazing young scientists. So I am the science research teacher at the high school, and so I'd like to take a few moments to go over what was an incredible year in science research at the high school. So for many of these students, as I understand it, they're attending virtually. So if you, but if you're in person, when you hear your name throughout the presentation, if you could just stand up, that would be awesome. So the first up is the Regeneron Science Talent Search. What I've wanted to do, but I don't know that I can do, is use, oh, hold on just a moment. I think I found it. No, maybe not. A little cursor, a little pointer. But anyway. So the first is the Regeneron Science Talent Search, and this is a, a competition where seniors, in November of their senior year, basically present work that they had completed through high school, whether it was the year before or perhaps as a sophomore. So what happens is about 1,400 or 1,500 kids apply, and 400 or 300 students, I'm sorry, are selected as Regeneron Science Talent Search or RSTS scholars, and they're each awarded $2,000, and the school is awarded $2,000 as well, which is really kind of nice. And this year, we had three students. The first is Stephen Blank for design of a rapid temperature independent, highly accurate dual antigen COVID-19 detection card. The second is Ella Moore for inhibition of COVID-19 respiratory complications via an R954 peptide Brady-Kinon-one receptor antagonist. It's a mouthful. Nakaneishi for creation of a rapid, non-invasive diagnosis for specific learning disorders via fixation tracking in gaze interaction. So before I go into what each of these are very briefly, I'd just like to pay special attention to the fact that now, for the last decade, Greenwich High School has had 37 RSTS scholars, which is just simply incredible. So it is really cool. So very quickly, let's see, can I get it to move? All right, so first one up is Stephen. So essentially, what he did very quickly, I won't read the title again, but, you know, keep in mind, all of this work was happening during the pandemic when the kids were basically squirreled around in the school doing all this research, and there really wasn't a method to, to detect COVID-19. Now, we're all very familiar with these lateral flow devices or these little stick devices where if you have two lines, you, you're a positive test. What makes Stephen's test different is he uses fluorescence to do the detection with a UV flashlight. And what makes that so significant is UV detection, using fluorescence is about 1,000 times more sensitive than the current, you know, test that we use where it's just simply visible color. So that is an amazing feat that he did. Thank you, Stephen. Great job. The second is Ella Moore, and I know you're looking at these things and you're getting a little dizzy. So I'm trying, I'll try to explain very quickly, but you may have seen this, some of these before. But COVID-19 over here on number one, on the left, the way it gets into our cell is it basically migrates through something called an ACE2, an ACE2 site. And that ACE2 site basically regulates something called Brady-Kinon, which is represented by these light blue dots in number two, if you can see my mouse moving around. So what ACE2 does is it controls the production of DABK. And once the virus has migrated through that ACE2 inhibitor, the DABK starts to basically reproduce out of control in, in the cell that's infected and all the neighboring cells. And so subsequently, those DABKs pass through what's called a B1R receptor and cause all of the inflammation that was really the, or is really the most significant aspect of COVID that really caused all the trouble. So in, you know, while this was all unfolding and we're all talking about the different medications that didn't work, Ella had the idea to actually find, she found an R954 peptide, which essentially blocks the B1R receptor so that the DABK would stay on the outside of the cell. And to make a long story very short, it basically would disrupt or prevent, you know, the, the intracellular inflammation that causes all these respiratory disorders, which was fantastic. Just as a special note, I tell this story all the time. When, when Ella and I called this startup company to get this R954, the gentleman on the phone said to me, he was the CEO, and he says, Andy, what university are you calling from? I said, well, I'm calling from Greenwich High School. He says, well, is this a student project? And I said, yeah. And he said, that's incredible, because we waited so long for this material to be purchased by some leading university to do this work. So this is beyond incredible, given the timeframe when it happened. So congratulations, Ella. Alexa Nakaneishi, our third Science Talent Search scholar, what she did, was she created a, basically a five-minute reading test that uses an eye tracker to basically diagnose whether a student has dyslexia or some other very similar reading disorder. So very quickly, if I could, if you look on the, the purple diagram on the left, that is typical reading eye movement, where you basically track from left to right in a very linear and, and, you know, sort of predictable way. If you look at the, the middle patient or the middle student that has dyslexia, you notice a very uneven, very jagged movement across the line. So if you look at the graph on the bottom right, the purple lines represent the norm, you know, the typical readers, and the blue represents the atypical. And so essentially, in five minutes of taking this reading test, you can, you know, Alexa's system would be able to diagnose with 100% accuracy whether a student, whether a young person or any person for that matter, has dyslexia, alleviating all of the expensive doctor visits and so forth and so on. So another very incredible project. So congratulations to Alexa. Next up is the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair. So we had basically 18 participants, and they are Melissa Bayram, Justin Bernstein, Angelina Fogarty, Anna Galick, Isabella Gega, Ambika Grover, Zara Hawk, Adam Klajewski, Audrey Lynn, Ashley Malkin, Madalai Minichetti, Ella Moore, Catherine O'Brien, Naomi Park, Marika Sakai, Yushon, or Jackie Song, John Trudeau, and Elizabeth Wallace. Some notable finishes at the Connecticut, once again, it was a tremendous effort by the students. Some of the more notable finishes were Ambika Grover finished in first place in life sciences and was awarded a trip to ISF, first place in engineering, and another trip to ISF, second place in biotechnology, and something called the Joseph A. Gerber Award of Scientific Excellence, which is awarded to just two students in the state, and they each receive $1,000 cash and a silver medallion. Naomi Park finished in first place in physical sciences and an ISF participant, second place in aerospace, was the second Joseph A. Gerber Award winner. Ashley Malkin was first place in computer science, fourth place in biotechnology, and fifth place in life sciences for an ISF participation as well. And Elizabeth Wallace was third place in physical sciences. Adam Klajewski, fourth place in physical sciences and a University of Hartford Engineering School $120,000 scholarship, which is simply amazing. Angelina Fogarty, third place in biotech. Eureka Sakai, fifth place in biotech, and a University of Connecticut Academic Excellence Scholarship, which is essentially half tuition for the four years at UConn. Audrey Lynn, second place in environmental sciences and selected to participate in the Genius Olympiad. Justin Bernstein, third place in environmental, and also selected for the Genius Olympiad. And finally, Madalai Minichetti received a University of Hartford Engineering School $120,000 scholarship as well. Only two students get those scholarships, and both were GSS students. So congratulations to all of those tremendous students that went to and did so well at the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair. Next up is the Norwalk Community College Fair. Now, this is a smaller fair, but what was really kind of unique about it this year was it was the first in-person fair that the kids participated in. So it was really, it was really nice to get, you know, get out from behind the computer screen and have these kids actually talk to someone face-to-face. First person or first student, Justin Bernstein, Isabella Gega, Zara Hawk, Noah Kim, Audrey Lynn, Madalai Minichetti, Catherine O'Brien, Naomi Park, Miel Schoenberg, Roman Softman, Jackie Song, John Trudeau, Arien Wadwa, Elizabeth Wallace, and Kiara Young were our amazing participants. And once again, the GHS students did really, really well. They essentially received most, or six of the eight top awards, including Elizabeth Wallace finished in first place, Kiara Young in second, and John, Isabella, Noah, and Naomi each received an honorable mention. So congratulations to our Norwalk Community College Fair Science Fair participants. Awesome job once again. Next up, the last thing up is the Intel, or I'm sorry, not Intel anymore, Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. So as I alluded to before, three of our students, well, there are actually four spots that were won, but one was won twice. So three of our students went to Atlanta, Georgia in May to participate in the International Science and Engineering Fair. That is Ambika Grover, Ashley Malkin, and Naomi Park. Now, again, to give you some perspective, in the last 15 years, that is now 49 students that we have sent to ISF, and that is simply incredible. Their schools would clamor over getting one or two students in that same time. And we've got basically nearly 50, which is just awesome. So to give you a little impression of what happened, here they are, holding their medals. So I'd like to go over just a little bit. All, all three young ladies did exceptionally well. Ambika Grover finished in first place. This is incredible. This, this ISF is basically the best of the best from all over the world. So each of these kids has had to have won their state science fair to get to this point. So you literally have about 1,200 of the brightest kids on the planet. And Ambika came in first in biomedical science, which is another very, very difficult category to be in. So she designed a novel, I'll read you the title, "Novel Dual-Functioning Tissue Plasminogen Activator and Anticoagulant Therapeutic," I'm out of breath, "for Rapid ischemic Stroke Treatment." So very quickly, if you have a stroke or if you have blockage, which is made out of cholesterol in your artery, you typically administer TPA or tissue plasminogen activator. The unfortunate or the downside of that therapy, which works very well, is that it circulates throughout the blood. It's not, it doesn't have any specificity towards that clot. It works on the clot, but it can go anywhere, and it sometimes causes stroke. So what Ambika did was she created this microbubble delivery system of TPA and also something called dicoumarol, which, so what happens is this new material that's imaged in the center there, it looks like a baseball with these little tentacles, these tentacles are selective to the clot. And so essentially, this, this little bubble will bind the clot, dissolve it, and the drug that she loaded into the microbubble will also disrupt what's called the clotting cascade, which is the mechanism by which clots reoccur. So not only is she dissolving a clot, she's causing, she's basically prohibiting it from reforming, which is simply incredible. Keep in mind, guys, I'm reading this to you, and I need to remind you, this is a 16-year-old girl doing this stuff. It blows my mind whenever you do it and I talk it. A second was Naomi Park. She finished in second place in environmental engineering for $2,000, and she did something called "biomy medic removal of microsphere water contaminants via cell, calcite infused coral-like melamine sponges." So very quickly, she found out in her research, she was very concerned about microplastics and all these, and all the plastics that we throw into the ocean and waterways, they basically create these little microplastics or just shards of plastic. It turns out that coral, dead coral, if, you know, which is very interesting, can actually grab these microplastics through a process that's called, essentially, the nucleation, where the, the calcium carbonate will grow around the plastics, which is shown here where my cursor is. So, you know, Naomi's idea was to, why not take advantage? We can't go around killing coral to take out microplastics. That's, as Naomi puts it, that's counterintuitive. But what we can do is mimic that in a sponge, where we can basically create this environment in a plastic, you know, in a, in a sponge, in a melamine sponge. So what we can do is we could catch these microplastics. So on the right side of this screen are scanning electron microscope images that this student took herself, right? And this is basically showing that her sponge can remove over 64 million microplastics for a device that's basically a square foot. This is simply awesome. It is so incredible. So in the middle, you see a clean sponge, and on the bottom, you see the green ones. They're green because it was easy. We bought a green version of microplastics, so they'd be easy to visually see. So congratulations, Naomi. Simply incredible. And finally, Ashley Malkin finished in fourth place in something called translational medicine, which is more a device-supplied medicine. She received $500 for development of readily accessible machine learning diagnostic for early-stage TBI using eye-tracking methods. So very quickly, oftentimes, and especially in youth athletics, you know, kids collide, their head, you know, they basically have collisions of the head, and no one's really sure, do they have a concussion? If they, you know, if they play on, are they risking serious injury? These repeated undiagnosed concussions can lead to post-concussion syndrome, memory problems, brain fog, and, and longer-term Parkinson's or CTE, which we've heard a lot about with professional athletes. So what she did was she devised a diagnosis system or diagnostic using machine learning or computer learning, where essentially, a student and athlete, in this case, would go into the tent, much like they have on the sidelines of a football game, where they reset a shoulder or something like that, and take this two-minute eye test. And based on the movement of the eyes, which is very connected to the areas that are, that are damn, you know, that suffer from these head collisions, she'd be able to tell you whether or not you have a concussion in, in minutes, which is simply incredible. Congratulations, Ashley, for awesome, awesome work. By the way, Ashley is a ninth grader. She's a freshman. I don't know how she got these skills, but God bless her. I don't know how she got these skills, but God bless her. So last but not least, the Stockholm Junior Water Prize is a water prize or it's a water competition where there is a student selected as best in the state and each, you know, this year it was Adam Klajewski, who is currently in Colorado defending his work. What Adam did was he created a system to not only detect, but to clean what are called PFOAs from water. PFOAs are these flame retardant chemicals that are really getting a lot of use, especially in these forest fires in California, for example, where they spraying this all over the environment. And while they're great at putting out fires, they get into our water systems and they, they don't degrade, they simply need to be removed. So this project is very, is very timely, it's very applicable and, and the results were simply awesome. So congratulations to Adam. And thank you all for listening. I'm sorry that I went a little bit too long, but I really appreciate your, you know, your recognizing our research students. Thanks again.
Thank you so much, Andy. It's, it doesn't ever feel wrong because you learn so much. I feel like you're in class when you listen to these students. And it's great to see some names that I know and I happen to know the freshmen sitting there, Ashley Malkin, who I've known since preschool. I'm not sure I can take any credit for the science that we taught at Round Hill Nursery School, but it's pretty impressive, all of these students. And I'm excited to learn more about what you're thinking about doing in the middle school when you see the results in the high school later. So thank you again and on to all those that are standing here online. Thank you, stand up, congratulations. Okay, now we get to go to our public hearing and let's, but it's great. We're going to hear from Javi and Kwame one last time, so come on down, guys.
Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. I'm Javi Serra, Senior Class President at Greenwich High School. Tonight, as Ms. Stowe just said, it's my final time addressing the board. So with that, I'd like to begin with a lot of thank yous. Mr. Silkman, standing, you're sitting back there, got a little smile on his face. Your tireless efforts towards supporting student government have not gone unnoticed. A GHS alumnus himself, Mr. Silkman is devoted, passionate and supportive. I remember when former student body president Mark Chen stood up here a year ago today and spoke of Mr. Silkman's incredible email availability from 5:00 AM to midnight, but I wanted to just expand on that a little bit. Mr. Silkman doesn't just get a little bit of sleep, he is incredibly prompt. His little icon would appear on my document seconds after I sent him my email. He is a truly dedicated civil servant and it's no wonder he's a fine product of the Greenwich Public School system. Mr. Mayor and Mrs. Tuwata, yeah, let's see him round of applause. Mr. Mayor and Ms. Tuwata, I'd like to thank them both for their accessibility and open doors. To get one of their ears, it really was as simple as showing up to their office. Together, we modified midterm and final policy to better support students and I want to thank them for all of the behind the scenes hard work that this took. Ms. Foster, thank you for helping us navigate everything this year, from our two successful dodgeball tournaments to record-breaking sized prom. We really couldn't have done it without you. Lastly, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones and former Chairman Bernstein, thank you for your continued dedication to hearing student voices at GHS. At each and every lunch meeting, you showed your faces and offered your attention. This direct line communication was priceless and I truly, truly believe it better the GHS student experience. So thank you. I'd also like to offer my own reflections. It's with immense gratitude and pleasure that I stand before you here tonight, as it has been every month. The scheduled time for student voices at each board business meeting is a proudly unique characteristic of the Greenwich Board of Education. Believe it or not, attending these meetings has honestly been my favorite part of being class president. Despite the homework load or whatever upcoming tests I had, I always found myself staying at these meetings way past my allotted speaking time. This is because decisions that this board makes are of critical importance and as a student, I have a vested interest in our schools. Your jobs come with plenty of public criticism and little praise, but I just wanted to ensure you that all of your work is appreciated. Regardless of all the noise, please continue to give our teachers the agency to teach us truth based in reason and fact. Please continue to support new initiatives and explore new teaching ideas like the new African Americans, Black and Puerto Rican Latino Studies elective. Nelson Mandela once said, Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon, which you can use to change the world. Never forget the power you wield and do not waver in using it to support the growth of GPS students and ignore whatever agendas others ask you to meet." Thank you for your time tonight. I look forward to speaking. I look forward to watching Isabella and Mitch, what they can accomplish next year. Also sitting back there, and I have the utmost confidence that you all continue the great work that made my 13 years in the GPS system invaluable. It truly has been a pleasure. Now I will pass the mic to our student body president Kwame Bwating.
Thank you so much, Javi.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. My name is Kwame Bwating, Student Body President at GHS. Tonight, I give my last remarks in my position. I'm truly grateful for my time, not only this year, but in student government over my four years at GHS. I've attended lunch meetings with Dr. Jones since I was a sophomore and can truly attest to the board's commitment to consistently, consistently listening to the wants and needs of students. So thank you to Dr. Jones and I know that she'll continue to do an amazing job alongside Chair Stowe. I also want to show gratitude to Mr. Silkman. Back there, like Javi mentioned, our student government advisor, for truly being the glue that kept everything together this year. This man would wake up at any time and respond with the utmost diligence and care for all of our initiatives. Not to mention, he edited all of my speeches and kept me on track when setting agendas for lunch meetings and student government mass meetings. Student government is lucky to have such a dedicated advisor and we cannot thank him enough. Before Javi and I pass the torch to Isabella and Mitchell to begin their planning for next year, I'd like to share my farewell thoughts on actions, on action. When asked why he doesn't observe moments of silence after mass shootings on the Daily Show, Congressman Jim Hines said, "If you're in the one room where you can start fixing this problem and your answer is, 'Let me just stop talking for 10 seconds. And by the way, the flag at the top of our building, we're going to drop that down 20 feet.'" That's negligence, that's not honoring anybody. Honoring the victims means that we're going to fix this. Representative Hines' words stuck with me, not because I don't believe in moments of silence, but because I am a firm believer in action. For the past year, I've watched with my two own eyes, parents bigger, back and forth to a point where this room is physically split into two sections based upon what agenda one supports. It is my view that this is a room that can fix our community's issues. This is a room intended to be a space for truth as well as the opinions of Greenwich residents. But most importantly, this room is intended for hard and sometimes uncomfortable discourse that results in substantive initiatives. When discourse becomes more divisive, unproductive or unified, then there is a problem. I believe that we as a community, that news as a community have reached this problem and need to address it for the betterment of our schools. We all have experienced what inaction looks like on a local, state and federal level. So I implore us all to use these meetings as a means to take action and make Greenwich Public Schools the best it can be for every student, teacher and parent who is fortunate enough to be a part of this community. With this, I would like to close our remarks by introducing you to next year's leaders of student government, student body president Isabella Gega and student body vice president Mitchell Goldstein. I'm confident that these two will excel in their roles and I'm so excited for them to continue this important tradition of representing GHS students at Board of Education meetings. Thank you all for your support, enjoy the summer and best of luck next year.
Before these guys come down, I just want to say to Kwame and Javi, sometimes this job is hard and, but you really just reminded me of why I do it. So thank you so much for those powerful words. I can see why you guys led the school this past year. I look forward to meeting both of you and hearing from you the next year. Thank you so much. Are we speaking tonight or no? No, not today, okay, next year, okay, very good. Way to put you on the spot. Well, thank you guys so much, seriously. Kwame and Javi, you know you have to make a tradition of continuing to come back, right? Okay, good, good. Okay, all right. With that, we go to Lil for the GEA comments.
But then you know me, come on. Hi, good evening, everyone. Chairwoman Stowe, Board of Ed members, Dr. Jones, GEA and community members. Before I start my speech, I'd like to congratulate all the science winners, Nigerian or community winners, international ISEF winners. Our students are just, just amazing. Our spring sports, and I'll talk a little bit about the, the girls team, but I don't know if I can say, we're going to say, it, it's just so many women in the science that I noticed this year. It warms my heart and as a three-sport athlete at my high school and a D1 athlete and still involved with the NC2A and conferences, it just, and I went through Title IX and I wasn't allowed to like to play the trumpet or the drums or take the wood shop that my brothers did or any of those things. And I remember with my sophomore year in high school, we got the same equipment. It was just, just amazing. So we've come a long way, baby. So a little bit about girls rugby, I remember when it was just the club and I did go out there and help for a couple of months. And it's a new sport, so to take on a state championship is just amazing. So that's another thing brings a smile to the heart. But I want to congratulate all our amazing students and our athletes. This is a great place to go to school, to live and to work, truly. Evidence of that tonight. Okay, now everything else is going to be boring. Some things always seem impossible, you know, until they're done. We've had really difficult years, these past two and a half years, and we've made it through this year, 21, 22 school year. Yes, we have come a long way and we've learned a lot. Shutting down to remote schools, oh, schools opening up, cohorting, hybrid, social distancing, all-in, with masks on, masks off, and now we're coming to our graduation and now school's going to be out for the summer. Okay, I hear a song coming on, but I won't sing, although I do think I'm a good singer. So kudos to all who made this happen for our students. But we still have much things to accomplish. We're not done yet. Must keep our focus sharp, you must keep positive momentum moving forward on these issues. You must continue to make our mental health initiatives a priority for our students and our staff. You must focus on teacher recruitment. It's very competitive out there and not only recruiting them, but retention. We must continue to focus on stocking our shortage of qualified substitutes. We're in a, a good start with all our building initiatives, but we need to continue to replace, repair and maintain our school buildings, provide more time for our teachers to collaborate with colleagues, plan a less time on non-educational duties and more time with our students, more time on professional learning. We are on the right path. May we continue to show kindness, compassion, empathy, be tolerant, work through our challenges together and celebrate our successes together. The world has changed, as Mother Teresa said, "The world is changed by your example, not by your opinion." I wish everyone a happy and healthy summer. And I do have a little token for our Board of Ed members. Not the Godfather, don't eat the cannoli.
But there are cannoli.
Thank you so much, Lil. I like that.
Hey Lil, this is, this is not going to change the labor negotiations.
Who's going to say that? Just don't give him one, give him mine, I get his. Thank you so much. All right, Mimi, what do you have for us? Do you have any gifts? Well, then you can follow.
I, I was thinking, please don't make me follow Kwame, because I couldn't have topped that. And then you brought the cannolis, seriously? We're all public servants, all right? Thank you, that's so kind. All right, good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe and other members of the Board of Education. I am Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all their members. Let me start by saying congratulations to all the students highlighted in the Student Government Athletics and Science Awards section of tonight's presentations. The world is your oyster and your accomplishments to date are only the beginning. Looking at tonight's agenda, we're excited to express our support for the newly proposed elective junior innovators program at the middle schools. What an incredible opportunity for our middle schoolers to be able to learn from and be mentored by GHS's Andrew, Andrew Bomonte. If tonight's science award summary wasn't impressive enough, I encourage you to read the book, The Class, about GHS Science Research Class. I wish I could have a redo at high school to partake in all the amazing classes being taught at GHS and this program being extended to middle schoolers sounds phenomenal. We're also happy to learn more about the summer school program aimed at filling in educational gaps for students requiring additional support as well as accelerated and enrichment programs. We're also happy to see the Zero Waste Program on tonight's agenda, led by our Green School Chairs. For years, we have spent hundreds of volunteer hours doing research, having meetings, running pilots, collecting data, delivering presentations, educating students during lunch hours, sorting, recycling from garbage and writing for grants. We would like to see waste reduction a district priority. In the lease, we would like to apply the procedures that were written for our district nearly a decade ago. Recycling is the law and current adherence in our cafeterias is falling short. PTAC is ready to work with the district on this. There are many other items on the agenda tonight that we're interested in, too many to mention, so I'll pivot instead to the big thank you. As I finish my term as PTA Council President, I want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Jones and all of the others on PTAC. As PTAC President, I've truly been standing on the shoulders of giants. You will hear from some of our committee chairs tonight, specifically diversity, equity and inclusion, green schools and academic excellence. They will highlight some of their recent achievements and current advocacy work within the district. This is just a sampling of the incredible work that's been taking place and we look forward to continuing to work with the district toward the betterment of all of our children. What you will see tonight from my colleagues is their unwavering commitment, dedication, expertise, intelligence, professionalism and also caring for our community. They are steadfast in their research-based approach to look at best practices in other districts and see what we can improve in our own district. Many of you know that I work a day job in finance, but together we have a massive and highly massive skill set on our PTAC team with professionals in educational consulting, mental health, law, marketing and so many other fields. Together, we are a very strong and mighty team and it's been my pleasure to work with them this year. So a big shout out and thank you to all my PTAC colleagues. We've enjoyed working collaboratively with Dr. Jones and her staff as well as the Board of Ed and many others that lead the district. Thank you and thank you. I also want to give a brief plug for the district. They sent out a parent panorama, panorama survey and those are due tomorrow. It might be in your junk folders, mine was, your life might be crazy right now, mine is. But let's all find the time to fill out that survey and spread the word. Let's have our voices heard. I know this administration welcomes the feedback. Before closing, I want to acknowledge that we are late with our PTAC annual report. That's mostly on me and we will submit it in the coming weeks, make sure it's included in the future Board of Ed docs for the public record and also posted to our PTAC website. These are hectic times for all of our working parent volunteers, myself included. So thank you in advance for understanding. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
I was just going to say, having written that report many a time, if it's late, that just tells me how busy. how busy PTAC was and all the incredible work that must have gone on this year, and I cannot wait to read through it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mimi, for your service. Thank you for having me the other night at the PTAC event. And thank you for plugging the survey. I must admit, I am all about just making the deadline. And so I did mine before I came to the board meeting tonight. And you have one more child than I do, Mimi, so it did take some time because you have to do it for each child, but it is really important. So please, everyone, make sure you get that in before it comes on. Okay, so with that, we now go to our community comments. We do have 22 speakers. I'd like to hear from everyone. So if you are saying sort of the same thing as the prior speaker, we would appreciate you sort of saying thank you and moving in as quickly as possible. And I will call the first speaker with who is on deck. So the first speaker is Jackie Holman, followed by Alyssa Vanos.
Board of Education members and Dr. Jones, I signed up to speak about WMS soil update because it was the first of the 14 agenda items that you chose for us. Rather than letting us speak on a first-come, first-served basis about the issues parents feel are the most important. For instance, I noticed that you didn't have an agenda item to talk about how you are illegally implementing Yale's Ruler program without board approval. It's really shocking what you've done. You've literally leveraged a public-private partnership to gift Yale's curriculum to Greenwich Schools. But the worst part about it is that you completely bypassed the Board of Education approval process, a process that is required by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 170, Section 10 to 20, subsection E, which specifies that each local Board of Education shall establish a school district curriculum committee. The committee shall recommend developing and approve all curriculum for the district. All curriculum must be approved by the committee before it can be implemented, even curriculum that's gifted from a public-private partnership. The 9,000 series of your own bylaws reflects this legal obligation of the Board. It says that you are required to implement the educational interests of the state as defined by law and that the mandates in the general statutes pertaining to education within the jurisdiction of the State Board of Education shall be implemented. Chairwoman Stowe, why does this process not follow before the adoption of social-emotional learning programs, including Ruler and Second Step? Why do we allow your only employee to start training teachers on Yale's program without board approval as required by Connecticut General Statute and by your own policy? Is the Board exempt from following Connecticut statute? A couple of months ago, a former Board member, Peter Sharon, found you that you were operating illegally by teaching this unapproved curriculum. Out of curiosity, did you seek legal advice with counsel after that meeting? Did you take any steps to remedy the known violation of Connecticut statute? And to remedy the violation of your very own policies? By the way, speaking of board policy, I have repeatedly asked you to consider implementing a policy to protect vaccinated students from experiencing potential heart-related issues in gym and athletics. I'm not sure if you saw my op-ed in the Greenwich Sentinel about vaccine injuries, but the risk is very real. And in fact, we've seen two teams, in fact, two teams in Connecticut have already died from myocarditis caused by COVID vaccination. I am begging you, please do not ignore this risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Alyssa Vanos, followed by Amy Muth.
Hi, thank you.
We're going to share our thoughts.
Yeah, great, thank you. First, I want to say that I was blown away by the athletics and science achievements this year. That was amazing. And I'd like to say, Kwame, we hope to make you proud by using this discord for good in the future. We are Amy Muth and Alyssa Vanos, co-chairs of the PTAC Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We were introduced as a special committee for the 2021-2022 school year, but have been voted and approved as an ongoing committee. We look forward to our continued work with the PTA, school leadership, and all of you. The 2021-2022 school year was about laying the foundation. Early in the year, we identified key heritage and culture moments that could be included in school newsletters and other communications sent by PTA and school leaders. We built alliances and partnerships with the Curriculum Enrichment Team, discussing ways we can partner in the upcoming school year. We have built a website that will be ready for launch in advance of the 2022-23 school year with book recommendations curated in partnership with the Parrot Library. We plan to use the website to share content around diverse activities and happenings in Greenwich and beyond to broaden the knowledge and celebrate our multicultural community. We are retaining six of our current DEI school reps into the next school year and look forward to new members joining. We have built connections throughout the community, including the YWCA and the Greenwich Alliance, with the goal of stronger partnerships and programming in the 22 and 23 school year across all of our schools. We've built relationships with the middle and high school GSA teachers and counseling leads to promote LGBTQIA events. We supported and partnered with community leaders to promote the Town of Greenwich Pride event on June 12th. And for those who missed it, what an amazing day that was. The artwork was provided by our Eastern Middle School GSA, and the town proclamation is now framed and on display at Greenwich Public Library. Our most visible achievement will be bringing Common Circles and the Shoah Foundation's experiential installation and identity project to Central Middle School. So thank you, Tom Healy, for the partnership. It will launch in the spring of 2023 and align with Kindness Month. Ordinarily, this would cost over $1 million to install, but because of the unique opportunities being gifted to Greenwich Public Schools for the upcoming school year by Common Circles and the Shoah Foundation. I'll pass.
We would like to speak in support of number six of the Board's strategic plan, Stretch Goals, where you identify the goal of increasing the diversity of staff by utilizing diversity and retention initiatives. It is very important for our students to feel represented in the staff, teaching, and administrative body. We were thrilled to see the strategic plan's fifth goal of increasing each student's sense of belonging, but we were hoping the goals would also be more specific to include more teacher-staff training in general around diverse student needs in order to increase feelings of belonging and enhance curriculum, so each child feels represented. We believe social-emotional learning in general is critical to creating a safe school culture and overall sense of inclusion. We really hope this teaching will be particularly mindful of the needs of all children, regardless of race, culture, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status. We continue to question how the Board tackled the Title IX policy update and are concerned with the ability to provide protections to all students. With respect to that and in relation to the CMS building specs, we encourage the Board to move ahead with providing space for all students, including the three gender-neutral bathrooms in the original specs. We hope that there will be greater movement on the part of GPS in addressing the racial imbalance issues as identified in the December report. In particular, how can GPS supplement PTA budgets or curriculum enrichment opportunities? So the enrichment opportunities in program at Julian Curtis, HAMAV, New Lab, and Western Middle School mirrors that in schools around them with much larger PTA budgets. One suggestion would be an expansion of Assured Experiences, the Curriculum Enrichment, which is the vehicle by which there can be equity in experiences. Further, how can our BOE meetings be even more accessible? Can these meetings be simultaneously translated into other languages for our non-English-speaking parents or ASL provided for our deaf and hard-of-hearing students and parents? Accessibility is key for all of our families to feel included and increase an overall sense of community. We encourage GPS to consider Ruler on an even broader scale, beyond the EMS pilot-funded by the Greenwich Alliance. As a tool for increasing emotional intelligence throughout our district, we can look at school climate data at other schools in Bearville County who are using Ruler to see its utility. Creating a safe and inclusive environment will benefit all students in their mental health issues and potential violence in our student population. We were reminded at the Town of Greenwich's Pride event this past Sunday of how important it is to promote and foster respect, acceptance, inclusivity, and an overall sense of belonging in our community. When a former GPS-educated man shared that if there were events like this when I was in high school, I would probably be a different person today. Actions and words matter, representation matters. We hope to see you at the Town of Greenwich event at noon tomorrow in the steps of Town Hall. We thank you for the opportunity to talk and welcome how we can work together to support all of our students.
Thank you very much. Next up, Allison Khan, followed by Megan Crutchley.
Sorry, can you say it again?
Sorry, Allison Khan, and then Megan Crutchley. Sorry, did I get that right? Yeah.
I'm a little bit height-challenged. Hi, good evening. Good evening, Dr. Jones, good evening, Chair Stowe, and members of the Board. I appreciate your time. My name is Allison Khan. I'm a resident of Greenwich, a parent, a spouse, a member of the LGBTQ+ community, and a human being who cares about this town as being a place where everyone is safe, especially our children. I'm missing my most precious time of the day right now, my bedtime routine with my five-year-old, because it's critical that I speak out on behalf of our LGBTQ students of all ages in this town. I speak on behalf of the trans kids who continue to be the battering ram for nonsensical culture wars waged by people who have never met, let alone tried to understand what it's like to walk in their shoes. There should be no space for bullies in this town, not for disinformation or hate and ignorance, not at the expense of our children, not for anyone. There's no threat, there are no trans students taking scholarships away from star athletes, there's no documented trend of harm that comes from creating gender-neutral bathrooms. What we do know is that when you strip policies of stated and federally guaranteed protections for LGBTQ students like this Board did with Title IX, the pain of that erasure is felt. It is felt by our LGBTQ students the hardest. We have failed them. When we make fun of kids needing safe places to use the bathroom, we have failed our children. When you consider erasing us from history, from literature, from curriculum, we have failed. The arguments being made are tired, they've been debunked. We cannot allow ourselves to be swayed by misinformed minority. What's also proven is that the majority of us in Greenwich and across America, more than 80% by major polls like Gallup and others, believe that LGBTQ people deserve the same rights and protections as everyone else. We must put the culture wars to rest. We have so many more important things to work on, and we can actually make meaningful progress if we can come together rather than allow a small vocal few to drive us apart. We have the power to do right by our children. And I'll end with reading the proclamation that Alyssa referenced that was read by First Selectman Fred Camillo on June 12th at Greenwich Pride Celebration. Whereas the Town of Greenwich proudly supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the Town of Greenwich. And whereas, we as a society acknowledge the need for education and awareness to end discrimination and prejudice, and encourage residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality that members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate their contributions that enhance our town.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, Megan Crutchley, followed by Hallie Shulman. Sorry, Megan.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Megan Crutchley, and I'm here representing the queer and gender-diverse community. As a queer health advocate, non-binary health coach, speaker, and educator, I have two mantras that guide my work. We are all just flowers in the garden, and inclusion helps everyone. I'm not here to talk about celebrating diversity, since we already celebrate diversity in the world around us and the beauty and uniqueness of plants, animals, fish, and flowers. What I'm asking is that we start to realize and include the great diversity that also exists in human beings. Gender diverse people have always existed. We show up in ancient Indian texts over 2,000 years old, and throughout the journals and diaries of the first conquistadors and colonizers of the Americas. In fact, the reason why trans and non-binary identities may seem like a fad or a fashion has to do with the very type of erasure of our existence that Greenwich school system is taking part in as we speak. I assure you, I exist. When we talk about inclusion helping everyone with the example of gender-inclusive bathrooms, we talk about not only transgender and non-binary kids and adults, we talk about kids with special needs that have AIDS with them, we talk about kids with trauma, kids that have been bullied in bathrooms, we talk about kids with religious obligations that need a private space, and we talk about adults and children that are menstruating. We all have gender-inclusive bathrooms at home, we use them on airplanes, and we use them every time we use porta-potties. If you don't have a safe access to public bathrooms, it limits the time that you can spend in public, and it can lead to health issues. 8% of trans and non-binary folks had a urinary tract infection or kidney-related medical problem from avoiding bathrooms. Teachers also suffer from this, just so you know. 59% avoided using public bathrooms altogether. 26% of transgender and non-binary people reported being questioned, verbally harassed, or physically assaulted in bathrooms, myself included. LGBTQ plus youth have some of the worst health outcomes in the United States of any kids. And according to the Trevor Project's National Survey on LGBTQ+ Mental Health in 2021, 42% of queer youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, and that jumps up to over 50% for trans kids. 72% of queer youth reported symptoms of anxiety disorder. 94% of LGBTQ youth reported that recent politics negatively impacted their mental health. On a positive note, LGBTQ youth who have access to spaces that affirm their gender identity reported lower rates of attempted suicide. Trans and non-binary youth who had one person in their life that accepted and affirmed their identity were 40% less likely to attempt suicide. You may think this doesn't affect you, however, you don't know which children are in the queer community. By removing stated protections for LGBTQ youth and denying basic human needs like bathrooms, you're further damaging the health of not only queer youth, but those who love them, and allowing ignorance and hatred to take the place of love and equality. I'm going to finish my last two sentences. We know the type of world that ignorance and hatred creates, and let's instead take this time to organize around common humanity and love. I thought that was important to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Hallie Shulman, followed by Mary Tobin. Is Hallie online?
I am not seeing anyone by that aim online.
Okay, not online. Mary Tobin? Oh, here she is. And then next up is Bob Chaney.
Greens, Dr. Jones, Chairwoman Stowe, and Board of Ed members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening in support of the Zero Waste Schools Program. My name is Mary Tobin, and I am a proud parent of a first grader at Old Greenwich School. I have been grateful for the support of GPS in so many ways, big and small, during these last two years of the pandemic. I wanted to offer my thanks to each of you tonight while I have the opportunity to do so in person, so thank you. Tonight, I respectfully ask you to consider adopting the proposed plan for the Zero Waste Schools Program. In particular, I want to focus on the critical need to reduce our food waste by getting our food scraps out of the trash and into the compost bin. As a volunteer with Waste Free Greenwich, I have seen firsthand the positive impact of working with community members to help turn their food scraps into a renewable resource that improves the health of our soil, our plants and vegetable gardens, and in turn, ourselves. When we throw our leftover food into the trash, most of it ends up being incinerated, releasing toxins into the air we breathe and the air that our children breathe. When I volunteered at the food scrap drop site, I have been amazed by the willingness of residents to make a difference. People stop by to chat and tell me again and again how much lighter their trash is, it no longer leaks or smells, and they no longer feel that weight of guilt of wasting so much food. And many of them say, "My kids said I should start composting." Our children will inherit the world we leave them, and we can give them the tools and best practices now to be good stewards of their environment. Look, nobody feels good about wasting food, but fortunately, this is a problem we can solve. We have proven examples of school districts that have implemented food scrap recycling in our neighboring towns, such as Westport and Wilton. And we have a blueprint for how this could work here in Greenwich with the Zero Waste Schools Plan before you tonight. Food scrap recycling is a highly effective way to divert the bulk of cafeteria trash and keep the heaviest and most expensive components out of our waste stream. For example, in Wilton, they diverted over 90% of all their waste in just five months, and 48%, almost half of what would have gone in the trash, was food. Food that instead was shared, donated, and turned into compost. Now, we recognize that not everything can happen at once, and that is why the plan recommends a pilot phase for food scrap recycling that would then be expanded to other schools. The relatively small costs associated with hiring an organics holler to take away the food scraps can be offset with changes to our carding contract, dramatic reduction in tipping fees, and state grants. As an RTA member and together with the base of support of committed parent volunteers, many of whom are here tonight in Green... many of whom are here tonight in Green, we will be there to speak up on the plan's behalf during our town's budget deliberation process next year. Together, we can have a huge impact on improving the health and well-being of our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Bob Chaney, followed by Renata DeFratesis.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chaney, and I'm speaking this evening regarding the Zero Waste Schools Program as well. For those who might not be aware, the Zero Waste Schools Program will enable a standardized system regarding waste reduction across the entire Greenwich Public School District. Julie DeShams and Angie Hartwellus will go into detail later this evening about what exactly the Zero Waste Schools Program is and what it can do to assist the Greenwich School District get back to the legal standard of recycling in this city for the public schools. What I want to speak about this evening is about the Title I schools in the district as it pertains to the Zero Waste Schools Program. Title I schools often lack the volunteer base that other schools in our district have. As a result, there are issues getting various tasks like recycling in the cafeterias accomplished. This also makes waste reduction a harder issue for our Title I schools as well. Now, this is where the Zero Waste Schools Program comes in. This system will have uniformly and consistent consistency across the entire district as it establishes a top-down approach. This approach supports the district procedures that were set in place over ten years ago. The Zero Waste School Program through implementation and education will incorporate a team-based approach that entails just one planning meeting with administration, relevant staff, and volunteers. These teams, called green teams, will ensure that waste reduction is happening in all fifteen district schools, even those with a less substantial volunteer base. This program, once off the ground, will not require additional staffing. The Zero Waste School Program timeline plans for all Title I schools to be the first schools to use organic haulers, as was just talked about, which is shown to be the most effective method of handling food waste. We can't wait to see these organic haulers in the schools, and they will serve as a pilot for the district in the winter of this coming school year. But Julie and Angie will also speak about this in greater detail later this evening. In closing, I just want to state that the Zero Waste Schools Program is designed to bring uniformity and consistency to the waste management system so that students and staff have a similar experience in all fifteen schools and follow the same best practices. We know that some schools have teachers and principals, lunch monitors, custodians, and perhaps even an army of volunteers. But these things should not be the determining factor of whether or not waste reduction efforts are being made at a school. Recycling in all fifteen schools is necessary by law. I feel that as students move from elementary to high school, they need to be accustomed to proper, consistent guidelines and procedures ensuring waste reduction and lack of contamination. I know that because of remote schooling, we took a few steps backwards in regards to recycling and waste management in the district. I feel that it is now time to take a leap forward.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Next up, Renata DeFratesis, followed by Harriet Gilmer.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Renata DeFratesis. I live in Riverside. I have a fourth grader at Riverside School and a sixth grader at EMS. I am the co-chair of the EMS Green Committee and is co-chair and member of the Riverside Green Committee. I will talk about my experience at Riverside, as I've never been to EMS because of COVID. The Green Committee at Riverside School is a very active committee. It has a lot of support from teachers, parents, staffs, and principals. For the year, we have at least five big green activities in the school, like Waste Free Lunch Day, Good and Cold Drive, Halloween Custom Drive, Recycling Refresh in the Cafeteria, and many more. Riverside is an example for other schools to follow. A brief example of the continued works in the compost station at Riverside School. They have a very well-designed and functional cafeteria bean station where they have recycled bean, compost bean, liquid bean, and general waste bean. Teachers and students help bring the compost material to the station. With the support of our principal, fourth-grade students collect the compost materials from the bean station. A teacher holds the door that leads to the outside of the building. They dump the material in the compost station and come back inside the school, always very fast and efficient. Thank you very much. Custodians that are union contract cannot transport food scrap to the outdoor compost bin. So at Riverside, we rely on teachers and students, but not every school has this luxury. Holes and responsibility of facilities, district leaders, district staff, principal, teachers, students, custodians, and PTAs are largely defined already by the district procedure approved by the Board of Education ten years ago. The Zero Waste School proposal further defines the role and responsibilities in incorporation additional waste reduction strategies. Implementation and education should not rest on the shoulder of student groups, passionate teachers, or parents' volunteers, but instead should be led by principal and district administration and support by other stakeholders. According to the district procedure, school principals and district leaders are responsible to support implementation of and comply with solid waste recycling program, provide guidance to teachers, staff, and custodians, and promote use of signage and among other duties. All teachers are charged with instruction to recycling rules, modeling and promoting the process, and ensuring proper bean are handled. Custodians are labeled recyclables and provide and monitor and enforce compliance of recycling. Success depends on the bottom-up and top-down collaboration and adherence to the procedure and law. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, Harriet Gilmer, followed by Hillary Harper.
Good evening. My name is Harriet Gilmer. I'm a parent at Riverside School. I have a second grader and a third grader, and also a sixth grader at Eastern Middle School. I have been on the Green Committee since my sixth grader was in kindergarten. So this is my seventh year now, and I'm currently on the board at Riverside over green wellness and the garden. As Renata just mentioned, Riverside has done an amazing job. Really, the group of parents and Mr. Weiss has been very on board with the whole program. Anything we've asked for, he's said yes to. We feel very lucky. We applied to be a green ribbon school several years ago, and that was a huge honor for us, and we've worked hard. And there's a green ribbon award that when I spoke to the Connecticut Green Leaves Program about, I said, "What do we need to do?" You know, we do all these things at Riverside, and what can be done next? And he really, what they stressed was what we lack here at Greenwich Public Schools, is he said it needs to be, if all the PTA volunteers left, the program needs to be sustainable. That's what really, it needs to come from the top down. We do have a handful of teachers who are very involved, and we're so grateful for them. And they get support from, you know, several PTA members, but in general, they also get some hard comments from some parents sometimes. And our custodial staff is, some are on board, some are good for it. Their contracts forbid them from taking out the compost. We came up with an innovative idea for our students to do it. Our student council program, where students took initiative to take control of composting and recycling in the cafeteria, was hugely successful. And then as soon as we got off the ground, we had COVID. And during COVID, there was no recycling. And we asked, "Can we have it? Can we have it? It's too much work." And it was, again, it was custodial staff has too much on their plate, which I do understand. But again, as Bob mentioned, recycling is a law. It's not something we can't, we have to avoid. And by teaching our children the law so it won't apply to us is not really like giving them lessons for life. And we work really hard at Riverside, and they go through the schools. And I think, I wish for all the schools that they had the same equal opportunities. That, and for that to happen, it needs to come from, it needs to be just what we do. It needs to be part of the culture at Greenwich Public School System. And this Zero Waste Schools Program, Julie and Angie, they've put so much time and study and research, and they know all the numbers and the details. But just as a passionate parent and community member, I just think this is a benefit not only to our students, but our entire community. Whereas people at home, you know, just the waste reduction in our town, it really starts with, you know, we have a giant public school system, and it really begins there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Julie Harper, followed by Roger Rosendahl.
Good evening, and thank you Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, and the entire Board of Education for this opportunity to speak. I am Hillary Harper. I'm a Riverside parent. I currently have a second grader and an incoming kindergarten, so lots of excitement for this next year. I have been part of the Green Committee at Riverside for the last three years. The first year as a volunteer, and the last two years as a co-chair. And so I am here to share a little bit about my experience on the Green Committee, but primarily also to support the Zero Waste Schools Program. So just quickly, with most of my chair experience being through COVID, wanted to kind of jump in this year and what we're able to do. And as Harriet mentioned, we've had a lot of support from our principal, Christopher Weiss. And so in the fall, even though we couldn't go into the schools, we were creative. And he allowed us the opportunity to come onto the Plague Man, to work with the students. And for American Recycle Day in mid-November, we were running relays, recycling relays with students. And we were really encouraged by what we saw the students doing, because not having been in the schools for the last better part of the two years, not having known that recycling stations were not up and running, we still found that our students knew how to recycle. They were excited about it. They wanted to show us what they remembered, what they'd been doing. So that was great confirmation in the fall that we were still in a community that really valued recycling. And then jumping ahead to more recently, for Earth Week, we planned a whole week at Riverside. We were finally allowed to go back into the cafeteria, which was extremely exciting. We were encouraged to see that our cafeteria sorting station was up and running. And so we were able to reinitiate the recycling refreshers with our students. And except for the kindergarten and first grade students who we knew and through COVID hadn't received any of that initial education yet, we found that our students, again, remembered. We had, we already like kind of seamlessly had a recycling and sorting station back up the students were using confidently. The young ones needed some guidance, but it was clean, and it was efficient, and it was up and running. So I'm offering that quickly to then go and offer some of the highlights of the Zero Waste Program proposal that I think are relevant to what we're seeing at Riverside and what we'd like to see in all of Greenwich Public Schools. So this initiative does ease the burden on custodians because you have the bags being changed less often, it's more clean. And you do have support from the community and volunteers coming in. So you have people in place and support to create a uniform program across the district. This program does not create more waste, it just diverts it in meaningful ways. So it doesn't require any extra staff at the schools. But we do need to have the training for the custodians and those lunch monitors to ensure that they're able to support the students when they're there, when we don't have our green volunteers and parent volunteers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Roger Rosendahl, followed by Sandra Heath.
Good evening. My name is Roger Rosendahl. I'm a twenty-five-year-plus, rather than a bench. And both of my children spend time in public schools, and I myself am a public school person. When, where I had really smart, dedicated teachers who actually opened doors for me, for which I'm very grateful. Could not help but be impressed by all the presentations tonight by Greenwich High School, both athletic and the science program, very impressive. I especially shout out to the, I'm going now to the rugby folks, it's kind of dear to my heart. I played rugby myself in college many, many years ago. No girls then, and so you come a long way, baby, for sure. So why am I here? Transparency and accountability. Transparency, understanding the process of your decision-making with respect to any particular issue. Accountability, holding yourselves accountable for truth with meaningful consequences for false information and compliance with, as Jackie Holman said, compliance with your own policies, your own regulations. This is particularly important for controversial issues, the rural program, social-emotional learning, critical race theory, safety, gun policy, anything that has a political bent connotation. The education school system is to teach children how to think, not indoctrinate them into what to think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Sandra Heath, followed by Dina Erso. Dina Erso, sorry. Do you see Sandra, Sandra, online?
I do not see anyone by that name.
Okay, then, Ms. Erso? Sorry, followed by Sophie Lunschow.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chairwoman Stowe, and Board members. My name is Dina Erso. I'm a mother of three boys. Our oldest attends Central, he's a sixth grader, and I have a fourth grader and a preschooler at North Street. My husband and I are both lifelong residents of Greenwich. I'm here to speak regarding the CMS project. I will also be incoming co-president next year and the year after, or PTA president the next, I'm speaking as a mom. But before that, I wanted to say thank you for sending the police officers to the schools for the last couple of weeks. It's been really enjoyable to see them interacting with the kids. I drop my preschooler off every day, and I was a former prosecutor, so I know a few of them, and we always chat for a few minutes, so that's really enjoyable to see them. But today, I'm here for CMS. I'm asking you three specific things as you tackle the project. First, that you think long-term and don't be short-sighted, even if it means that the state will reimburse it a lower percentage as a result. I'm encouraged to hear that the ed specs that are being discussed are hopefully going to be a bigger building, and I ask that you not backtrack on that plan. Second, I ask that you strongly consider what the staff and the students suggest about things that they think would make the building the best it can be, whether it be adequate space for instrument storage, or placement of the bathrooms, or enough offices for the PE teachers, or multiple cafeterias. These are the people that are in the buildings day in and day out. They have firsthand knowledge, and I ask that you give the input that they are passing along the utmost attention. And finally, I ask that you don't lose sight of this being a school whose purpose is to be a place for students to spend very formative years learning and growing. I'm sure as the process continues, there'll be many opinions on things like noise and traffic and things along those lines, and I'm not diminishing those concerns, but I do ask that at the end of the day, the focus remain on CMS being a school. And I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Sophie Lunschow, followed by Frances Novae.
Sophie, you can speak and go ahead, please.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Sophie Lunschow, and I am a sophomore at Greenwich High School. I'm just going to jump right in there and say that I'm advocating for the Zero Waste Schools Program for GPS. And after looking it over and providing some input from a student's point of view, I think that it's a really great initiative. I've noticed in the past at Eastern Middle School and now at Greenwich High School that waste reduction is definitely not a focus when it really should be. For instance, at the high school in the student center where students eat their lunch, there are hardly any recycling bins. You really have to search for them. And as a student, I know that many students don't try to find recycling bins because they just want to get back to their friends and are honestly just too lazy to go searching. This means that the majority of the waste gets thrown in the trash at GHS, when really it could be managed in a much more sustainable way, not only environmentally, but fiscally as well. This Zero Waste Schools Program would be such an effective and efficient solution to this issue. If sorting stations were set up all over the cafeteria or student center, kids would be able to easily access the correct bin and quickly dispose of their waste. Furthermore, in school, many of my peers don't even really know why recycling, composting, and really just effectively managing their waste is important. They don't understand that reducing your waste reduces greenhouse gases, which will slow global warming, or that it will save energy and precious resources, or even that it will reduce incineration and landfilling, which will prevent water and air pollution. All of this is pretty basic knowledge that should be taught. So I think that moving forward, it would be really important to teach the students, often in classrooms, cafeterias, and through special programs, why waste reduction is important instead of just how to reduce your waste. That's another reason why I like this program so much. It really educates the younger and probably older generation, like the teachers, on the impact of waste management. Now, I know that I'm only a student, but I think the fact that I am a student is a big reason why my voice should matter on this issue. My generation is figuratively and literally the generation of the future. We need to develop habits. We need to develop habits such as waste reduction habits that will benefit our future and our planet in years to come. As we know, the planet is quickly deteriorating
Eighty seconds.
and climate change is quickly becoming a very serious issue. Waste reduction will teach kids about these environmental impacts and also teach them very easy ways as to how they can reverse these impacts by simply sorting and lessening their waste. So that's my opinion. Thanks so much for letting me speak. I really and truly hope that the board will support the Zero Waste Schools Program. Thanks.
Thank you, Sophie. We always love hearing from the students especially. Thank you so much. Next up, Frances Novae, followed by Lisa Small.
Hello, this is Frances Novae, mom of three GPS kids. For the past year or so, I've been using my three minutes to share children's books to remind us why we're here and who we're here for. And the voice of the student, she just shared that too. In September, I will join the ranks of Mimi Dove, Brian Palduanes, Cricket Diamond, Karen Hirsch, to take on the role of PTAC president. Perhaps a new friend would like to take my place as storyteller. Until then, let's enjoy excerpts from Let Me Fix Your Plate: A Tale of Two Kitchens by Elizabeth Lilly to kick off the family favorite, The Road Trip. Once a year on a Friday night, my family leave the city and drives for hours and hours to a mountain in West Virginia. My mama opens the door into the cool, dark night. "Let me fix your plate," she says. Mama's midnight kitchen is warm and light with blue tiles on the floor and cat plates on the wall. Later, my sisters stack vanilla wafer cookies, mama pours the pudding, and I cover the top with slices of bananas. Then we eat it all. Three days later, we leave mama's house so early it's still night and drive and drive and drive south and south and south to a little orange house on a patch of scratchy grass in Florida. We get out of the car and the hot, sticky air hugs us close. Then abuela runs out and hugs us even closer. "There's food inside. Come eat," she says. In abuela's midnight kitchen, white tiles feel cool under my feet. Aunts and cousins and uncles and neighbors talk over each other above my head. I crunch tostones and scoop roast and slurp fun and fall asleep at the table. My mom's still laughing, saying loud Spanish words that I don't understand. In the evening, I hide behind the couch with my book while my cousins and aunts and uncles dance salsa and merengue. Abuela finds me and gives me some tostones. Three days later, we leave the little orange house and drive and drive and drive back toward our house in the city. We stare at the changing scenery, tummy's full, hearts fuller, already missing the salsa, sausage, toast, tostones, aunts, aunts, arepas, abuela, naranjas, bananas, mountains, mama, cats, fog, and scratchy grass. When we reach our house, "I'm hungry," I say. So mommy mixes flour and daddy beats eggs. I set syrup on the table. And little politos, hungry little chicks gobble them up and then drift off to sleep in their soft feather nests. Board of Education, principals, vice principals, teachers, staff, good night and thank you for an incredible year. And to all, I wish you a summer full of wonder, whimsy, and wellness. Our children are our future.
Thank you, Frances. Maybe you could send me your reading list for the summer. Next up, Lisa Small, followed by Diana Martinez.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, members of the board, Dr. Jones, the entire GPS community and GEA. My name is Lisa Small and I, along with Jessica and Ray Polanish, are the co-chairs of PTAC's Academic Excellence Committee. This year, our committee continued to advocate for the education of all GPS students to the highest levels of academic excellence with a greater consistency across all GPS schools and an effective and transparent communication strategy between all GPS partners in education. Despite the ongoing COVID pandemic, we were able to achieve, or at least further, the ambitious 10 goals set this year by the AE Committee. Among these goals, it was extremely important for us to develop a strong, productive, and transparent working relationship with each of the new K-8 program coordinators, Mike Reed, Tara Fogel, and BJ Marcus, as well as to continue to strengthen our relationship with K-8 Director of Curriculum, Mark D'Amico. It was very clear from our introductory meeting with Mr. D'Amico and his team in September that this group of administrators was different and that Jess and I would have a voice and be viewed as partners. Never before have we been given such unfettered access to and such open and transparent communications with district administrators as we have been given this year. It's truly been a revelation to have administrators openly acknowledge and subsequently demonstrate with their words and actions that parent voices are important, valued, and being heard by the district. We are incredibly proud of our strong bonds that we forged this year with the K-8 administrative team and we look forward to continuing to work in partnership with the district and build a new relationships in the coming year. In addition, a longstanding goal of the AE Committee has been to advocate for a second parent-teacher conference in our elementary schools. We are excited for the district to introduce this second parent-teacher conference into upcoming contractual negotiations with our teachers and GEA this summer. We conducted our own due diligence that showed that GPS is one of a very few school districts in our area that do not have a second conference. And that, and that from what we can tell, GPS administrators and teachers agree that this second conference is an important addition to our school calendar. We acknowledge the challenges that exist in building these conferences into school calendar and the time and effort required by teachers to prepare for these conferences and the general twists in terms of contract negotiations. However, the AE Committee, on behalf of our parent community, want to underscore to all of our parents, our partners in education, the importance of giving parents and teachers an additional opportunity to discuss student progress during the school year. The opportunity is now, is now here, so please, let's make a second parent-teacher conference a reality. Thank you and have a good summer.
Good night. Diana Martinez, followed by Cheryl Resnick.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education. Happy Pride Month. Fourth graders at North Myanna School have recently completed a unit on the struggle for civil rights in our country. And recognizing a teachable moment in the rainbow flags that decorate our town, I asked if I could come in and read a book about the history of the rainbow flag to my son's class. My son's teacher was delighted, but she had to ask her principal, who directed me to the curriculum. The principal relayed that I could teach about diversity in general, but not about gay rights. It's discriminatory to exclude the struggle of an entire segment of our population since we need direct representation of all groups in our curriculum. So I contacted our superintendent for a specific policy. And she explained that words like gay and lesbian are considered mature vocabulary for our elementary students. Dr. Jones empathetically offered that I could do what other parents have done at elementary, have my son read a book in a small group with a social worker outside of class. I explained that having a social worker read the book seemed to pathologize being gay. And I wondered if at least we could have the book read in a celebratory way in the library with a small group of students who opted in. I finally got approval, only to find out that I had been relegated to the courtyard. So next week, we will have a small group of students in the courtyard reading together about the history of the rainbow flag at North Myanna School. We're not even allowed to be in the building. I wanted to paint a picture for you of what your policy looks like at Greenwich Public Schools. And let me begin by saying that teaching about the struggle for gay rights in elementary school is not the same thing as teaching about sexuality. We're teaching about the right to be who you are, to love who you love, without being persecuted for it. So while we do need to meet students where they are developmentally, I reject the notion that gay and lesbian are mature terms. For our children whose parents are gay or lesbian, these are the words used to describe the people who love them the most. For our children who have already had same-gender crushes as early as elementary, these may be the words that make them feel seen for the first time. Our current policy attempts to erase, silence, and ignore the existence of LGBTQ+ families, students, teachers, and community members. And I hope I don't need to tell you that our elementary students have already heard the words gay and lesbian.
Thirty seconds.
My son says students use the word in elementary school regularly, except they use it as a put-down, or they use it whenever a boy is not conforming to gender roles. This practice of avoiding the language of gay and lesbian in our elementary schools may be the reason that middle schoolers report an even higher rate of bullying and harassment than high school students. We're refusing to address their discomfort around the many expressions of gender and emerging sexual identity at their most vulnerable time as they begin puberty.
Time. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up, Cheryl Resnick, followed by Catherine McCursie.
I'm not Cheryl. Cheryl's driving. She couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me if I could read this on her behalf.
Okay.
So every time I say "I" and "my," imagine that I'm Cheryl. I am just made and surprised about the lockdown drill held on Wednesday, June 8th, at Greenwich High School. My daughter informed me that during the drill, the students weren't allowed to act like it was a real lockdown because of COVID protocols and social distancing. She and her fellow students had to sit in the classroom during the drill and continue to do what they were doing in class because they weren't allowed to huddle up and protect themselves like they would during a real incident. Was this experience limited to her classroom? Or was this the way the drill was conducted throughout GHS? What did this drill teach the students to do during a real situation, should it occur? What kind of message is this sending to our children just to dial it in and think that it's okay? Nothing needs to be taken seriously? If COVID or another illness was rampant, are the kids not allowed to huddle and help each other for fear of getting sick versus their own physical safety? I feel like GHS and GPS were just checking the box to say that they had a lockdown drill that had taken place. Are we still really at the point where the students have to change their behavior due to COVID protocols? I'm truly disappointed at what was taught to our children. Haven't we learned enough from what happened at Columbine, Sandy Hook, Parkland, and most recently at Robb Elementary School as to how to best protect our children and show them how to protect themselves and others? Lockdown drills should be taken seriously and all protocols should be required to be followed for all teachers, students, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Catherine McCursie, followed by Thomas Cunha.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, Board of Ed members, GPS community. This is going to be very brief, but I wanted to give a public thank you this evening to several people. On the first day of sixth grade, I'm a parent of an eighth grader here at Central and a CCS student. On the first day of sixth grade, Mr. Healy said, "Middle school's going to go very fast. It's the shortest time that your child will spend in a given school." He was right. The pandemic flew right by. And that's thanks to the teachers here at Central. They have really amazed me the entire time my daughter's been here. Throughout remote school, she was a remote student last year, and then the pandemic, and also again this year. They have been kind, attentive, pushy, pushing in the right way. I don't mean pushy, pushing her in the right way, challenging, and everything that I just can't believe they could accomplish in three short years. So I just really want to say thank you to them. Thank you to Mr. Healy and thank you to Mrs. Polan, who frequently takes my phone calls and is not hanging up on me yet. So. Also, I want to thank Jean Schmidt. He has been principal at CosCub School the entire time our family has been there. And he still also takes my phone calls, I think. So I wanted to say thank you to him. He's been a wonderful inspiration. And to ALP teacher Tracy Salvatore, we're going to miss you. You've been terrific and inspiring to our students and we can't wait to find out what you're doing next. And we salute you. Finally, at CCS, I know everyone's excited to welcome a new principal, so we hope that we hear about that very soon. And we can't wait to welcome that person and show them what a wonderful community CosCub School is. So thank you, and especially thank you to all of the teachers of Greenwich Public School who do the work I could never, ever do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Thomas Cunha, who I see online, followed by Gabriella Marcus, and that's our last speaker.
Yes, my name is Thomas Cunha. I am a father of twin boys in the same class as Ms. Martinez's. The words homosexual, gay are really used, are words that are really used, have been used in my children's class since kindergarten at North Myanna School because my children have two fathers. Me and my partner, we've been together for 25 years. So we really didn't need a lecture from Dr. Jones about sensitivity. For us, gay rights and the words homosexual are not sexual terms. They're terms about human rights. There are terms about the Stonewall riots, there are terms about the AIDS epidemic, and there are terms about the discrimination that continues to happen, including here in Greenwich and the terminology and the protocols that you people put in place. We will be attending this, we will be attending, my children will be attending, of course, the lecture or the book reading. And as they have been attending other events during Gay Pride. And I am proud to say, but very ashamed to say, that Greenwich has really done a disservice to gay people, gay parents, and gay children of gay parents in this, in this past year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'm sorry, and our last speaker, Gabriella Marcus. She's submitting her writing. Okay, thank you so much. All right, and that concludes our speaker list. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and talking to us. Now we turn to our monthly reports. Dr. Jones?
First of all, I just want to acknowledge the senior awards that happened earlier this week. They were just phenomenal and I think it kind of goes along with what we saw with science. It was just every single content area in the high school. So just well done for all of our seniors that were there this week. And if you've never been to the senior awards, it really is because they don't know what award they're getting until they get there. And I had never seen that before because this was my first senior awards because we've been in COVID. And it was just, it's wonderful because I had a program that did have the award and the names, but the students don't have them. So that's, it was so unique, just wonderful. We're also welcoming Jonathan Budd, our Human Resources Chief, who is online tonight. I know some of you haven't met him. David Eisenstein is also new in HR, so we feel like in our Human Resources Department, we're just so excited what's happening there. Just as a reminder, I know many of you are attending graduation next Thursday. It will be at Cardinal Stadium, our brand-new Cardinal Stadium, which is going to be very exciting. I want to build off of what Mimi said, please fill out the parent surveys, the family survey. And we really do count on that information and it helps guide what we're hearing from our families. So, and last but not least, I want to mention and just say, you know, congratulations to Ralph Mayo, who tonight is being honored at the FCIAC as a Hall of Fame awardee. So, and that's where Ann Caraballo is there on my behalf since we wanted somebody there. So congratulations to Principal Mayo.
That's great. I didn't know that. Okay. Cody, you want to go first? With the Alliance stuff?
Thank you. I have four updates. The Greenwich Alliance Annual Report is now available and I'm told it's part of the meeting documents. There's a good overview in there of their work over the last 15 years. So make sure you get that for your summer reading. Second, they're doing a VR AR, Virtual Reality Augmented Reality STEAM camp for rising 6th to 12th graders at Western. And registration is still open on the Greenwich Alliance website. Third, June 22nd, there's a graduation celebration for the avid class of 22. All 37 grads are going to colleges, including Connecticut State Schools and others that offered full-need scholarships such as Lehigh, Emory, Providence, Tulane, and George Washington. Last, $147,000 have been awarded in Reaching Out Grants to the GPS for innovative educational programming. The largest grant of $56,000 is for a Science Beyond the Classroom, which is for all GPS first and second graders to go to the Audubon. So that's all I've got.
That's plenty. Thank you very much. Should I just go and order? Michael Joseph?
On the strategic plan.
On the Strategic Plan group? I'm not on, am I? Okay, thanks, Erin. On the Strategic Plan, the recall at the retreat, we looked at some ambitious draft stretch goals that the leadership team, which is Dr. Jones's administrators, are continuing to revise and will be back for the board. But I always want to remind the board that any feedback to give the Strategic Plan Committee, if you could send us any feedback on the draft goals, that would be, that would be helpful so we can keep the momentum running, moving there with the hope of bringing the goals back to the community and get input on over the next couple of months.
Sounds like a plan. Karen? Nothing? It's okay.
No, but I will remind people to do the survey because we will be using that, those results as part of the strategic plan. So please, please, please send those in.
I suspect we're going to extend the deadline, Dr. Jones. Just saying. Christina Downey?
We've, we finally got approval from the state to go out to bid on the high school entryway. Hooray, hooray. So we'll be going out to bid, and hopefully I'll advise the board in writing once we see where the bids come back in. I don't think, I don't know if the board, I don't think we have to, we may have to vote on the contractor, I don't know, I have to look into that.
Okay. Joe, you're doing the waterfall update later, but you might still have something, right?
Later, okay, you wanted the waterfall update.
It's on the agenda.
I thought you took that off.
I took off the, if there was more to it.
Whatever you prefer.
Why don't we wait till it's on the agenda?
Less people here.
Exactly, I want to definitely make sure there's no one here to support you. It's my goal.
I second.
Okay. With that, anyone else on company updates? No, okay. With that, let's go to the discussion items. Western Middle School Soil Update, Dr. Jones.
I really don't have much of an update. As you know, we're putting this on every single month. And because we were submitting the rap at the state level, we'll be going through that review. So it's really, that's what's happening, and that's where we are right now.
That's good enough. I just want to make sure we keep, we stay focused on it. So I'm sure, hopefully, we'll have some good news by the end of the summer. Okay, summer school planning. Dr. Caraballo or Mr. D'Amico? Sorry, Tara. Oh, and this is where I have to do a shout out to the flipping the classroom, Michael Joseph. I hope you all did your homework and watched the videos ahead of time. I did, and it was very helpful. So I think we could go straight to questions, is that the plan?
We're not showing the presentation for the public?
That's not, it's been posted, it's posted. That's the whole point of flipping the classroom, according to Dr. Michael Joseph McConville.
Just, we think as a board, we should have a discussion about that later.
Okay, but, well, I'm ready to go into questions unless you guys, if you guys want to watch the video, just give me a sense. Yeah, you watched it, right? And it was posted for the public, so they had their time to also review it. Okay, so let's go into, sorry.
Just one point going forward, I'm okay with it, but it would have been good to have printed the, because I think there were some slides that would be just going forward, even though we don't, I'm not even saying we should watch the video, but to have the slides to be able to write on as we're having the discussion, just going forward. I think that would be a best practice.
I'd agree only because we're old, but most people would be fine.
No, but just to make notes.
I know, I know, I'm kidding. I'm a dinosaur too, I need to print it out.
We're not talking about age, you can call yourself old, but age is a state of mind.
That's fair enough. Ms. Costin?
I think maybe we should get the highlights, like a quick highlights version before we just go to comments because it's safe to assume.
Tara, can you give us some highlights?
Yes, I definitely can. The video is pretty short, too. I think I kept it under like three minutes. But the primary focus of our program is going to be literacy and numeracy K8. When we look at the 912 program, we're looking at credit recovery in core graduation requirements. And then in our secondary focus, we also have acceleration and enrichment classes. We're running from July 5th to August 5th. Our hours range from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This year, we're also very excited to launch a tutoring program. We have half hour sessions, two to four days a week for K through four families. That's rising first through fifth. And for our enrollment criteria, we invited academic support students, our ELL population, ESY eligible students, and then those taking our acceleration or enrichment courses. And I went through the sections that we have, 19 in elementary. We have five courses in math bridge, 22 courses at the high school. And then I went ahead and did a breakdown of all staff. And then our curriculum in K5, we have 90 minutes of literacy, 60 minutes of math. And at 68, we have 60 minutes of literacy and 60 minutes of math. And Julian Curtis does have another satellite campus this year.
Great questions. Michael Joseph?
So Tara, thanks. Everybody knows I'm a proponent of videos, but thank you, thank you so much for doing that. Feel free to help some of your more tech phobic colleagues with screencastify and stuff like that. I wanted to ask about the JC Satellite Campus, and I guess I wasn't clear what the, what the purpose was of that or why. It's, I got the sense that it's, we have a primary summer school, and then we have one satellite at JC. And I didn't know if we could, or it might be for Dr. Jones, but I didn't, wasn't sure what, what, what the thinking was there.
Tara, do you want me to take that, or do you want to go ahead and answer?
No, you can go ahead.
So this was something that we tried last year, and it was at the request of our principals. And it's mainly in our Title I schools where they really felt like they wanted a little bit longer day. They also are trying to extend the school year in that it's their teachers that are actually teaching in their program. So that way, they don't lose that continuity and just the way that the building approaches literacy and numeracy. And we did see good results. The reason it's one building is we will not do it if the principal can't commit and be present, and they have their own staff. Otherwise, they need to be at the, just the general summer school because that's teachers from all across the district. So that's why this year, and sometimes it has to do, you know, with a principal that is, well, for instance, New Lebanon, the principal will have a baby in the middle of the summer, have a new little one. They also may not have enough staff that want to work in the summer.
My question, that was at a New Lebanon building meeting, and we were talking about, they seem to think they're having summer school there.
Yes, we are hosting our district-wide summer school for K through five at New Lebanon.
Rather than CosCub.
Correct.
Ah, got that.
Just trying to plan summer school this year was incredibly difficult. When you think the high school campus is closed, CMS is closed. We have so many major projects going on around the district. And then on top of that, we also share space with Park and Rec for their programs, as well as Eastern Civic Center, which is also closed that houses summer. So we really work together with the whole Park and Rec team and to try to map it out.
Karen?
With respect to the JC program, how many kids are coming to summer school there?
Currently, we have about 42 enrolled as of Monday, I believe.
And have, I get a little, I do get worried in the sense that we're not being able to offer a similar program for other schools, whether it's Title I or not, throughout the district. And I'm curious to see whether or not we think we can accommodate this on a broader scale, particularly because if we did see certain results and how we feel this has some inequity across the district as it relates to other kids that won't be having the similar teachers and the same type of program.
I know we talked about this a lot last year. What we, what we do think is that if they can offer the program with their teachers, that is beneficial to children, especially in this K5 area, and it makes a big difference. We can't force teachers to work in the summer, so it's not something where we could make other buildings do it. We also have some buildings that wouldn't have enough students in summer school to really run, you know, an effective program. I will say the extra layer that, you know, Tara spoke to, but it was, it was quick because it's new for us, is the tutoring component. And the tutoring component is really trying to balance coming out of COVID. Young children want to be at the beach, they want to ride their bikes, they want to be little kids. And there are parents that would love to bring them in for reading tutoring two or three days a week, and then be able to play and not have 90-minute and 60-minute sessions. So we're trying to be more open in what we're offering families and options so they can make it meet what their family needs are.
I was going to say, that's a nice change. Karen?
I was actually going to ask questions, in fact, about the tutoring program. I was going to say, it's the first time I'm hearing of this option. I think it's fantastic. I know the board, over the past several years, has consistently talked about ways we can improve our summer school, especially for the younger students, and it used to be that they'd have to come in for a full day, even if they only needed language arts or math. So I think this will be really beneficial. But I, you know, especially for students who really only have a very specific need, even within language arts and/or numeracy. So I just had a quick question, though. Is, was this basically being offered to any student that wasn't, you know, meeting a certain level of mastery? The tutoring optioner?
The tutoring option was offered to any student who was invited to summer school. That includes our ESY and L population, as well as our academic support population. Parents could opt in for the full day program, running from nine to 12 for our general ed population, and then from eight to 12 for ESY population. And parents who wanted to have related services on top of tutoring, if they did have those in their IEPs, we are able to accommodate that in our crafty tutoring schedules. So it was offered to all parents. We had 38 families and 40 students capitalized on that as of Monday. I will tell you, we've gotten a few more emails this week for some families who booked some trips and wanted an opportunity to switch from the regular program to the tutoring option. So it's getting more popular as the sun is shining and the temperatures are rising, that's for sure.
Well, I think you partially answered my next question, which was, you know, for, you know, would this be offered to other students outside of that that might want to take advantage of that option? So I think you just asked that, saying you've gotten more emails. And I guess, so is the fee for this pretty similar than, than what we offer for the other summer school program?
Because the tutoring option is for all of our invited L or ESY students, there is no fee for the summer school this year for that population. We do have the standard fee structure that is agreed upon by the board for our acceleration and enrichment courses at the high school.
Thank you. And then my last question is, since you mentioned high school. I know in the past summers, we've had a lot more high school offerings, and they've seen they've been majorly reduced. I don't see many, if any, enrichment options, nor the, I think we always used to run an SAT or ACT prep course for a lower fee over the summer. Is that something where we took away for the summer just to give our educators a much-needed summer off? Or was there just not requests or need for any of those things?
Yes. I'm sorry, the decision to, of the 22 GHS course offerings was done in partnership with the program administrators at the high school, as well as their school counseling and guidance department, to figure out what core graduation requirements are students not meeting, and how are we going to get those students to get those courses within the four-year graduation rate? So those courses are going to be our key. Our limiting factors are staff, as well as space in our programs. So the 22 core courses that we are offering are the ones that our staff at the high school felt would be the most beneficial for as many students as possible.
Thank you for that, and hopefully when we, when we have the campus back open in the summer, we can start offering some of those awesome enrichment courses that the students don't have necessarily the opportunity to take during the school year. Because I know that those were always really impressive opportunities for students to take advantage of.
Yeah, and a small plug for the program. GHS students do have until June 24th to continue to enroll for those nine to 12 classes. And all of the information is available on the summer school website.
We should make the survey a prerequisite for it.
I like that.
Karen Kowalski, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have one additional follow-up question. So with the opportunity for the tutoring option, is it, is it either or? Or can it be combined with both taking the literacy and the math class plus getting the tutoring? Or do you only get one choice?
That's a great question. It is either or. If you are going to capitalize on literacy and numeracy, we do need you for that full day. The literacy tutoring at 30-minute sessions is in a small group ratio, which I didn't get a chance to explain in our quick overview, but it's a ratio of one literacy specialist to three students. We collect data from their current classroom teacher to figure out the strands that they need the most support on. And then we put them in a grade level band with other students who need that same support. So it's real targeted literacy support for that 30-minute clip. And parents could decide whether they wanted a Monday through Thursday, or a Monday, Wednesday, or a Tuesday, Thursday schedule. So when Dr. Jones gave this idea to Dr. Caraballo and I, she really wanted to stress family flexibility and how to support them in the most targeted needs while having them have a summer schedule that worked for their family. We did not, unfortunately, we were not able to craft a schedule where you could do 30 minutes of tutoring and then 60 minutes of math. In that case, you would substitute for the full day program.
Yeah, I just was curious because it sounds like a great program and something that from just having some background in one that struggles in the literacy component, that it might be a great option to look for, look into in the, in the upcoming summers where you could offer the literacy option plus that intensified component with the tutoring, particularly where it's such a low number of the ratio between students and teachers, I'm sorry, yes, students and a teacher. Perhaps that might be a really good opportunity for those that struggle, particularly in the literacy component, to get like a double whammy with not so intensive.
Thank you. We're going to take all the feedback we can from the parents, the students, and then the incoming teachers of the students who were tutored over the summer to find out how they're performing and continue to. If it's a program that's working to our families, I'm sure Dr. Jones shares the sentiment. We'll make it more robust next time around.
Downey?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. How many, I mean, I know the numbers are going to change a little bit. How many students do we have signed up at the main campus and for the high school courses? Do you have ballpark, or do you know it off the top of your head, Tara?
I do, at the high school, and this is all actually as of 63 was the last time we ran the data for the secondary program. We had 45 students in our high school courses. It's important to know that historically speaking, those numbers are going to bubble right before finals and after final grades are posted. That's when students are going to find out if they want to retake a course or get credit recovery. Yeah, for our math bridge courses, we have 18 students right now between five courses. That's our middle school 68 math bridge courses for students who want to accelerate into an additional math course in the preceding year. And we had around 290 in our K5 program.
Does that include the JC in addition to?
That does not include the 42 students that are in JC as of now.
And then just in terms of our costs, structure, do we have a sense? Or I guess, will that be a report at some point about, are we going to run, the goal is to run this as a break even, is that correct, Dr. Jones? Or, I mean, I know it's the goal, but is it, where do we think we're going to wind up?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that actually at the moment. I'm not sure if, Tara, have you worked with Sean at all on that?
That end of it, Dr. Caraballo has worked closely with him, so there is an approval process for all of the spending that does happen. But Ann does work on that closely with Sean.
Okay, no, no, just, and I guess we'll get, find out about that at some point over the summer.
Okay, thank you. How do the numbers compare to that last year in terms of actual number of students, not financials? More or less the same?
We have more students in our K to five program at this time and about similar in our 68 bridge program. I don't have the exact numbers on GHS because, again, that bubble does happen up until the 24th or that last day of school, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, and then I just want to understand directionally. And I noticed that for the assessments for math, you were going to use pieces of the Big Ideas Math Program, which made sense. But for reading, you were using STAR. I didn't realize that was still hanging around.
Yeah, we are using STAR as our assessment, just for summer school, as an isolated assessment that we will use for summer school for a few different reasons. I do this in consultation with our research manager to figure out what assessment is going to not take away from instructional time, since we only have them for 24 days, but can show growth in short spurts. So we are going to be utilizing STAR for reading in the K4 classrooms.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, Michael Joseph?
Yeah, so thanks. I did, I feel compelled to note, so I saw STAR, which I'm fine with the, the, I saw the literacy curriculum, which makes sense because it's our current curriculum in many areas, is the Teachers College curriculum from Lucy Callens. And obviously, that continues to be a concern of me, mine. I do think, it makes sense, Tara, that we have it in the, in the, in the summer. But I do think that, moving forward, particularly when we see the literacy data this fall, it's time for, for, for us to have a conversation about that curriculum and where it is. We know that it is the subject of significant national criticism. There have been a number of reports. it is the subject of significant uh national criticism. There've been a number of reports over several years criticizing it. And then I circulated to the board just the article in the New York Times, the front page, Sunday Times from last month around how responding to criticism, um, Dr. Calkins has decided to revise the curriculum, um, claiming the uh, all the learning that she's done in the last year about the science of reading, um, but that research is twenty to fifty years old. Um, so I do think it is something that we need to, we need to think about, particularly in light of the literacy scores. But it doesn't make sense for the summer. I'm not, it makes sense that it is what it is right now.
Although, while it is what it is, we do want to maximize this time for students with the highest needs. So we have worked in partnership with Dr. Marcus as well as the literacy specialists at the K five level to layer in foundations, Lexia, and then the book of G O Ds in our summer program. So all of our K five teachers will be trained on that in our prep days for summer school. So we're not solely relying, relying on those T C units. We do have a minute-by-minute breakdown of how they will be spending their time, including other resources.
That's great. And I know we've made strides with, with G O Ds and, and um, foundations and other programs to add bonus components. So I know there is other things that we do. That's great.
Yeah, I just think it's worthy to note that um, the, the literacy team is ahead of that and they actually, and we won't spend time on it tonight, but Mark actually uh took, took his team to another school district even looking at a, a reading program. They were in, infusing in this year uh that they were using because we know we're gonna have to go in that direction.
Anything else? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Tara. Uh, next up, Temple Executive Summit, Dr. Bud, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
It's my pleasure and privilege to join you here tonight to join the Greenwich Public Schools. And as you know, your reputation for excellence precedes everybody associated with G P S, and that includes our certified teachers and administrators who who just stand and do great work every day. I'm here to just give you a brief executive summary of where the district has been uh with teacher evaluation the past year. And of course, uh, I'm doing this based on the information been given to me uh as I'm transitioning into Greenwich for an official start on July first. But you should know that as our administrators are finishing up their final observations uh and documentation in the last few weeks of school, uh, you may be impressed to know that there have been over two thousand uh documented observations of certified teachers in our schools this year, uh, specifically two thousand and thirty. And uh, the evaluations uh show a, a range of uh proficiency and exemplary uh teaching practices by our staff from pre-K all the way through Greenwich High School. And uh, I think those of you are familiar with the Teacher Evaluation Professional Learning Plan know that the goal is to help teachers really excel at their craft uh by giving them feedback related to specific indicators of teaching and learning. Uh, we will be able to give you a further report in future weeks, once all documentations uh have been completed for this school year. But again, it's a privilege to join you here. And I know that we'll be speaking quite a bit about how teachers receive feedback on their craft and how we continue to maximize the growth of the district. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bud, and welcome. Um, maybe, Dr. Jones, if you could just give, especially for the newer members of the board, exactly how Temple's just sort of coming back because of during COVID, right? We weren't really following it. We, the state gave us, the whole state gave leeway on it, right?
Correct. The state had flexibility over the last two years. Um, so it's really just coming back. And even this year, as you know, we started out in a COVID-type environment at the beginning of the year. So there's an extension, and that's one reason. It's normally on the agenda at this time, and we would have most of them completed, but are, we're gonna go right up until the, into the last week.
So do you think this is something that we could see sort of our first meeting in September or?
We could, or I could just send it out to the board. It's really not, um, I, I don't think to spend necessarily at a board meeting on how many.
Yeah, that's a good idea, especially if we're gonna have a written report from P TAC and things like that. Maybe we could get it um, as soon as you have it. That would be great. Go ahead, Michael Joseph.
Is our evaluation plan, is that something that's, um, that's revised annually or is that, is that, it's separate from the contract a little bit where they're, it's connected? How, how does that work?
We actually have a Temple Committee uh that meets during the year, and um, they actually just went through a very large, um, you know, looking at it again over this last really twelve months. And Dr. Carabillo, I don't think she's on. I think she, unless she, is she, but is she actually on? Oh, yeah. Um, but she is actually the one that does that and runs the Temple Committee for us.
That, that might be, be helpful. So when we get the report, if, I guess we could get the, the revised plan too. That would make sense.
It's a good idea. Karen?
So when I asked a question about the Temple thing, Kathleen said we hadn't done it in a number of years. So I actually went back to a couple of meetings and I found the report that Dr. Carabillo had done in twenty nineteen in June. And I think if you go back and look at that, it gives you the background of all of this and then the process. It's a fairly lengthy document. So admittedly, I didn't read it all, but I did. Yeah, but it does give the background and it would be nice to know based upon that twenty nineteen document that she had presented, whether or not there have been any changes in the course of the process and in conducting the reviews and maybe update it. I don't know if it's updating that document, or at least that's a good baseline for us to start this process.
Karen?
What will be also helpful is we uh have a new uh Director of H R who will also be coming in to uh, to take a look at that and review and, and work also, you know, with, with our, our Head of uh G E A as well as Dr. Jones, see how uh, how that process is gonna work going forward. Uh, in the best way possible to ensure that our educators are, you know, getting positive uh, uh, feedback to, to support their growth as well.
Okay, anything else? All right. So it looks like we'll hear more about that over the summer. Oh, I think that's Anne. Are you trying to say something?
Uh, I'm in my car driving on the way home from the F B A. So as soon as I left that, I decided I would uh try to uh listen to the board meeting. We will be making a change in our Temple evaluation document this year. I've been in touch with the state. They are very uh impressed with our new rubric that we have uh totally revised in two nine, two thousand and nineteen, we revised it. And then we took a look at it again this year and we have done some more revision. We've also developed a fabulous resource guide for teachers to use so that we can use it as um a base for conversations between the administrators and the teachers and their reflective questions. It's really fabulous. And I can't wait to present that to you and then also present it to the state. And the state said they might want to use our rubric or uh, you know, their, their templates or the rest of the districts in the state of Connecticut. So we are working very hard at continuing to make Greenwich one of the most excellent districts in the state.
Okay, thank you. We think we got most of that from the car. Okay, thank you. Exactly. Okay, um, I think we're gonna move on to uh the big topic of the evening. I'd like to say central middle school and specs. Um, if I could just frame the conversation for a little bit, since we've done this a few times, um, and I wanted to give the board and the public an update. So the building committee, the six members, it was originally supposed to be seven, but one person got postponed to September that were recommended by the um select, Board of Selectmen, um, were approved on Monday night by the R T M. The, there are also representatives from the R T M, Planning and Zoning, D P W, and then Dan Watson from our schools that have been assigned. Yes, Laura? Yeah, so I said I want, I want from. I'm sorry, so we're down to five. Okay, got it. Okay, so there's five members now that the R T M approved on Monday night. But I think the other one or two are coming back in September, just one. We'll see. Got, okay. Um, then we'll have the, like I said, the other members from the various town departments, the B E two will select one next week, as will I from the Board of Ed. Um, so that's where the building committee stands. Um, tonight, we're having another discussion on this, but I think what's really important, and I think I've heard loud and clear from my colleagues here, is that we just don't want to move this too quickly. At the same time, it's important that the building committee gets started. And I was speaking to Dr. Jones about it, and I said, well, we're changing a few processes here. Why do we feel like this needs to be goodbye to it? Why wouldn't we make part of the N spec? They have to report to the board every other month. Make it a requirement. And if we do that and we, we bless something in the next week, you know, it's like building your house, right? I mean, you're, you're giving a sense, but things are going to change over time, right? Cause you don't like the kitchen anymore. So I don't want us to feel like we're sending this off and we're never going to see it again. I think it's behooves us to actually say as part of the N spec, this is a requirement. And when I mentioned that to Dr. Jones, you said that that's how you did it in Fairfield, is that right? So I thought I had a brilliant concept, and it turned out other districts were doing just that. So um, but so anyway, I, as we change processes, as, as we get better at these things, I think that's something that we should um actually put as almost like an amendment to our N spec. Um, I think we should go through all the questions. I know that we're kind of kept firing and off late to you. And so I know we all just got the document, but I really wanted to focus the conversation a lot tonight on size. Because until we figure that out and we get a, give a sense to the consultants, um, you know, everything falls from that. So I'm gonna open up to questions. I see your hand, Karen, but I actually was going to, okay, I was going to try to walk you through some of the numbers as I understand them. And then ask Chris Seckley to sort of help me out with it because I understand, he understands the percentages very well. Is that fair? Go ahead.
You know, the only reason I was asking is we got this fantastic document with all the, you know, questions and answers that we've asked. I just didn't, I wanna make sure it's getting posted. And or?
It, it already has been posted.
Oh, okay. It wasn't before I left the house. I was just double checking. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna sort of, I'm just sort of lay out the broad strokes of the numbers as I understand them, but please correct me if I am wrong at all. Um, we've talked a lot about state reimbursements and how it, and it's sort of driving a lot of our thinking, I think. And I think it's important, but we understand what we would really expect as Greenwich. Because the reality is, it's not the percentage that most towns get. Um, so I think we need to appreciate that. Right now, as the building was currently put, that we've seen at a hundred and four thousand square feet, I believe the reimbursement rate would, on that would be eight and quarter, eight point two five percent. We wouldn't even get the whole ten. The whole ten was really at eighty-six thousand square feet. So at a building that we've all seen so far, that I'm actually going to say might be too small, just for the sake of argument, um, that really is a building sized for six hundred. So for six hundred students at a hundred and four thousand square feet, um, you're looking at a state reimbursement rate, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, of around six point six million. Am I right? Assuming, sorry, assuming it's an eighty million build.
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so every bit we move, so then I looked at a scenario in which it was a hundred and seventeen thousand square feet, cause I think that was getting us closer to a, tell me if it was a six hundred and fifty or seven hundred student number. You're moving to five point eight million. If the, I think the reimbursement rate was seven and a half maybe?
Uh, it was, yes, it was seven point, rounding seven point six.
So my point is, if we were trying to move the building, so please give an number for the hundred and seventeen thousand square feet. But by doing that, I believe we were upping the students by potential by over a hundred students. And we're moving, you know, eight hundred thousand. We're losing eight hundred thousand. So I don't want us to spend so much time focused on that because in twenty-one hundred, you know, are we gonna be happy we spent the eight hundred, extra eight hundred thousand for a hundred students? I'd argue yes. But I think it's important that we, I don't know if I have the numbers perfectly wrote out, but it's, it's kind of in that, that mode. So I want us to sort of frame the conversation around that, especially as we look at historical enrollment that we just got in the, in the latest questions. Ms. Downey?
Yeah, I, I think we've all become a little focused on the state reimbursement. And I think we've all had the discussion that this building's gonna be here for a very long time. Um, I think we should be focusing on the building we think should be built. Um, and we'll get reimbursed because our reimbursement rate is not seventy percent or like some school districts get. I think we really, I agree with you a hundred percent that we should be focusing on the size and the number and the capacity. Um, and that, because all the other spaces are gonna flow from there. If, if, if we're building to hold more academic rooms, we should have a bigger cafeteria. We should have, yeah, I think we all feel good about the auditorium probably. But um, you know, we see this state reimbursement as this magic money, but the state isn't deciding what we should build. The state's only telling us how much money they're gonna give us for what we build. Um, but I think we, as a board, it's our job to be thoughtful um and determine what size building we think is the right size for this community. I, I know I've had conversations with several of you, and I think we all feel that way. I think the question then becomes what's that number? And what's the size we're thinking about?
Correct. And so that's where I, I kind of open up to everyone, but I do turn you to the question answered in the document, um, number fifty-three. I don't know what page number this is. Thank you. Um, but so, you know, you go back twenty years and, and uh, right here, we had seven hundred and thirty-two students. You know, Eastern right now has north of eight hundred, um, Western is in the sevens. You know, I, who's to say Central won't grow to that size again, especially because it's centrally located. So if anything were ever to change, um, and, or, you know, you had another issue where you had to move some children, not because you're redistricting, simply because the, the system is growing, um, this would be the school that could, could handle it if we, if we built it appropriately. So, um, you know, we're kind of at our low, and so I don't want to think about it. I, I mean, to me, the number feels like it's more in the seven to eight hundred student category, but um, I just wanted to get a sense for everyone. So I just wanted to start the conversation there. Thoughts, Karen?
Oh, well, before we had gotten this, I'd gone back and read through uh enrollment reports from the past, I don't know, decade. Um, and yes, I was, I was glad to see it sort of outlined here, but I, I, I know we had sort of asked, and I think also if you look in the documents a little further up, what page was it? Um, we'd asked about questions uh increasing the size. I think it's question number thirty-seven. Um, and I think uh Principal Healy also had suggested maybe looking at a total of six hundred and sixty, which if you look back at sort of the, the enrollment numbers of the past, I don't know, decade or more, that seems like a pretty reasonable student population size, if that's what you guys are thinking about looking at. And they outlined here, um, under question thirty-seven, if we went up to that number, uh, what that sort of would do to the N specs that we've been working at thus far. Um, because I think it was mentioned, uh, at least somewhere along the line that, uh, when they were here last time, C S G said the building was sort of for six hundred, but it wasn't really. It is actually the N specs, I think you mentioned something. If you want to be able to explain that. It was really for still five hundred and eleven, but.
So the, yes, and so we did clarify that with the team. And the building is being built by N spec. From when we look at it from a student perspective, five hundred and eleven students. And when the state looks at the total square footage, they will say, oh, that's a six hundred student building. Because all they look at is the, the big square footage. But our square footage is in like the large auditorium. It's in spaces that really don't help when you need classroom space. So we would need to add specifically classroom space.
And remember, we did that because it was serving the community, right? That's for the R T M meetings and things along those lines. So I understand why we did that. But I think we need to go back to focusing on if it's, just having it set for five eleven, I see as a huge problem.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure it was clarified here that even though they mentioned six hundred, it was, those N specs, other than things like the auditorium, were actually built for five hundred and eleven students. And so if we as a board sort of look at what we consider the appropriate size, the number of students, then we can sort of walk ourselves backwards. That's why I think they, they gave us an outline of what they thought it would need to increase by uh, if we went up to six hundred and sixty, I think it was the seven year.
Yeah. Okay, Cody, did you have?
Yeah, just to add on to that, um, I went even further back than Karen and pulled the numbers going back to nineteen ninety-six for all the schools um, in Central's district. I thought it was really interesting. So first, the five eleven number seems nuts because if we were starting from scratch without the projections and you said, okay, uh, you know, going fun trivia, the last time we had fewer than five hundred and eleven students was in nineteen ninety-eight, and it was five oh nine. And the lowest we have is, was four ninety-nine and ninety-six. It peaked at seven thirty-three in the early two thousands. So it just, you know, picking uh, building to a number that we haven't had since nineteen ninety-eight seems not smart. Um, I also just separately, when you kind of dig into why, one of the interesting things is the, it seems to me that the biggest driver is the change in enrollment and cost COB. the, it seems to me that the biggest driver is the change in enrollment and cost COB. Cost COB peaked in enrollment at 494 in 1998. It's projected to be down at 315 next year. And I don't think there's any clear reason why cost COB's enrollment is lower outside of just general durations and you know, the people that are living in that neighborhood. But I think the key idea is that when you think about over a very long period of time, you know, we, we can't predict what the neighborhood makeup is of whether families have you know, children in school or it's empty nesters or whatever. But I imagine like the idea is that that neighborhood has the potential to, you know, in this case, like that, that's 160 student swing. So if you took that, if you, if you change the composition of cost COB to a late 90s, that's the difference between 510 and 660. It's funny that that number lines, the cost COB spread lines up exactly with like Tom's guess. I would suggest even going slightly above that because it's better to have slightly more space than less. The other thing I'd flag is we've had multiple situations in recent years where we've had to, for whatever reason, roofs collapsing or the flood in cost COB a few years ago, we've had to move students around. So there's something to save for a little extra capacity swing space and it's central is centrally located for that. So I think repricing it, sorry, yeah, re-scoping it to a larger build just makes all the sense in the world. And I would be remiss not to throw an insult into Hartford. The idea of doing anything based on guidance from the state government is just always a really bad idea. So yeah, I, I'm, I'm very much in favor of looking at this from the standpoint of, you know, at least 660. And you know, yeah, that's it.
Yes, Joe.
In a construction, and Dan, maybe you can vouch for this, if you could. If you cut a piece of wood too short, you can't go back and cut it longer, can you? Okay. So so therefore we should take into consideration the fact that we need to have extra space, given that we might need extra space. So we also have to look at what the experts, because we did hire experts to tell us what the numbers are going to be. We have to look at the experts and also consider to give a little bit of a margin to understand things might go. That other way, if we make it too small, that's a giant error. If we make it too big, it's an error, but not quite as big as if we made it too small.
Ms. Costin?
I know that we have no idea what will happen with planning and zoning and all of the new housing that's going up in town, but we have to assume that it could have a material effect on our town population. And therefore, you know, sometimes adults have kids who move to town. So I, you know, I, I, it's one of those like wild cards that, you know, I, again, building too small would be a serious error.
Agreed. I don't want to be in 2100 and someone saying that board of 2022 is really short sighted. So. Exactly. And I'm going to put your name out there, Michael Joseph. Do you have some thoughts? I know, Michael Joseph?
I, I don't want to, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I mean, building, designing a, a middle school for a population less than the number that has been in the school over the last 30 years is simply boneheaded.
Good. So, Karen? No, I was just, I guess to double down on everyone's comments, I, I, I agree. And I also, one thing that I wanted, I think Ms. Costin had said at a prior meeting, if you build it, they will come. And one of the things that I was looking at is Central Middle School happens to be currently the smallest school by a population size. Western, I think, is somewhere tipping somewhere in the mid sixes and then Eastern is tipping somewhere in the eights. And to me, this serves as a, as an opportunity to, if there is a way, and I don't know if there is, and I'm just throwing out there, a way to also alleviate some congestion that we're certainly feeling at other schools. I don't know if it's possible to make Central a magnet school or give the opportunity to for others, for the two other middle schools for kids to opt in here. But it may be a way of helping to just balance out our middle school population. So it doesn't feel so crowded. So I think it's a perfect opportunity to do that. We certainly have a large middle school population. And I don't necessarily, if, if we build too small, yes, we will all be chastised later in life. And I'm going to be chastised later for a lot of things. And this is not going to be one of them. Think about your grandchildren here.
Just add on to that, Western has a waitlist now for its magnet program and is at an all time enrollment level.
So, okay, so let's start walking through some numbers, if you guys don't mind.
Can I just say, let's just take the whole state reimbursement out of the equation. I just think partially to Cody's point, also partially, it is.
Moving like, move like.
An $80 million building, you're talking about moving, you know, 500,000 years. And I know it's easy to be cavalier about the money, but it's more important to do the right project.
Hey, that's furniture.
Well, the other factor.
We use it.
You know, with respect to state reimbursement, we, we were talking about that in ways that might slow us down. And, and so one of the things to consider is how much of a reimbursement we, we would potentially be getting back from the state versus moving this project faster, because we all know that we need this. And so I would rather not hold it up. Now granted, it's not my money. Well, it is my money, but only a small portion of that is my money.
Not if you amortize it over the next hundred years, which is how long we're hoping the building will be here.
Right. But the point I'm trying to make is if we look at the long game here and trying to expedite this, I certainly don't want to hold the project up. Because we are shrinking a building to capitalize on a maximum return from the state that we don't know where we're going to get in red tape. And that slows us down. Potentially a whole nother year to 18 months. That's ridiculous.
Karen, I couldn't agree with you more, having seen what it's done to the high school entryway project. I mean, we could have gone out to bid on this project five months ago, if we weren't waiting to and jumping through the hoops for the state reimbursement. And as a result of that waiting, our costs may have escalated to basically eliminate much of what we're going to get reimbursed. I, I 100% agree.
So let's just build big and get the shovels in the ground.
Oh, my. I have one in the trunk. I'll get out there right now. Don't give Joe any ideas.
He's like, he's tough. Okay. So why do I have 117,000 square feet written down? Can someone help me? How many kids was? You said that was for six. 616. Am I right about that? Or is that more like 700? Can someone help me out? Because I feel like we need to be north of 700 kids in my head.
They basically said if you, if we add the 150 kids and to take it to 660, right, it increases, you get three more academic classrooms, you need an additional flex classroom, you need additional learning center. And an additional 1,000 square feet added to the cafeteria, 1,000 added to the media center. And core circulation would need to be increased by 2,400 square feet. So that's a total of 8,400 square feet added to what we have.
I make a suggestion, I think, can't we, and maybe the consultants, if we as a board say, we want the school built to 667, if we give them the number, they can craft comeback in the next iteration with the drawings. Is that correct?
That's correct. I just want to kind of have a sense for them. Because what if they tell me that's for some reason, 150,000 square feet? Now I know I'm going to have neighbor concerns. When you know that that would be like Eastern is 100 and somewhat 1,000 square feet, right? Like if you're going to be one and a half size, one and a half times the size of the current footprint, I think we just have to realize that might be unrealistic too for the field, right? I just want to get a sense for.
So if you, if you, so if you look at here, right, we'd ask them for just sort of a comparison, the current program.
Yeah, they're here. Just have them tell us. Roger?
Yes.
Could you give me the number, if I were only guessing, for 700 kids, for example?
Yeah, we can. I can't give it to you right now, but here's, here's the reason why we settled on 660. After a discussion with Tom and Fran and I, in the discussion, it was found that with the way the, the school program works with two teams, that the enrollment would work, could get divided up with the amount of classrooms and spaces very efficiently at 660. Now, what would happen if you went to 670, 680? Yeah, you could probably fit those kids in, but you'd start to get squeezed again unless you started adding more space. And it wouldn't be as efficient space as it would be at 660. So what we have to have is a discussion really with Tom and probably try to figure out what would be the next increment that we'd want to go to. If it wasn't 660, would it be 690? Or would it be 700 or 720? And what, what we try to do is develop the school, it's going to be efficient for you. It's going to be oversized to begin with. You may grow into it over time. But at least we want it to work efficiently. Should you ever get to that maximum enrollment or that higher end enrollment?
So obviously go up by 30 because it's a class. Is that what, is that, Tom, is that right? Cody, go ahead.
One question, just how the current building, what would that be labeled as for number of students? Because we've obviously had lots of different students in the building, but by our criteria, how many is the current building set for?
I'd have to do again the math, but from what I know of the size of it, I'd say that it's probably set up for somewhere in the range of about 600 students.
It's interesting to me, just with eyeballing it, like we'd be adding 10,000 square feet, but that the current building would would be accommodating 600 or that your, your guess is that it that the current one would be for more students, even though the, the new one would be bigger, although I guess we're taking the academic classrooms number down. But it would be, I'd be interested to know, just so it's apples to apples, hey, like this is actually larger, because this building did accommodate the 730 students.
Perhaps the standards have changed, Cody, I think, right? But it does.
Standards have changed and, and the word accommodation is, is misleading. While you can do it, it didn't mean it was easy. And I imagine when you had 700 kids in there, that was an extreme challenge for teachers and everybody involved.
So maybe Chris knew your original point is the right one. Maybe we just have to get kind of give them a sense for a number. And then let's go off and ask all their questions. Okay, sorry, Michael Joseph.
As, as far as being efficient, Mr. Healy, I don't know if you can comment on that. I'm assuming it's that have to do with the team structure, why certain numbers make sense? Maybe you could talk a little bit about that for the public.
Yeah, yeah. So I was, I was going to kind of jump in a little bit. So I, I think the, the issue this kind of gets to what Cody's point was as well is, you know, the current building is, is the, you know, traditional educational model off of those long hallways. I think the building that we're trying to build here has a little bit more of that middle school feel with grade levels and teams being much closer in sort of geography of the building, in areas of the building. So the reason why it's not necessarily the cleanest or easiest thing to say 30 more kids is one more classroom is because those 30 students aren't necessarily all in the same grade. It's not necessarily 10, 10 and 10. And then when we offer also different levels of classes, our class sizes don't just shake out evenly as well. So you know, when Fran and Roger and I had this conversation, in my brain, I went right to 660 because it gave me 220 per grade, 110 per team. And then I was able to give class average sizes because basically what you do when you're looking at these spaces and building a master schedule is you're trying to get an approximate class size based on the number of kids that you have. So when I look at my schedule and I say I have, you know, 100 students that I have to service in a given period on a team, that basically means I need five classrooms. I need five learning spaces because that's about 20 kids per class. It's never 20, 20, 20, 20. It, it varies. So sometimes I have to go a little lower, a little higher, but that's where that all of those numbers came from. So when we look at the next sort of jump, those are the kinds of questions that we have because you can make it work. But if you get, if we, if we were to take this current model and say 660 with these three extra classrooms, and then I went up to even 680 or 90, and it's going to be in different grades, that means that somewhere an eighth grade class is probably going to end up in a seventh grade classroom when no one's in there. So now I don't have that team structure or that grade level structure because I'm having to put them in an open room. So it's not necessarily an easy question because you can't predict an even distribution across the grade levels, but we're trying to create that. So I think going larger and growing into a building is obviously the right way to go. But what the right number of academic classrooms is based on that number would probably be at this point, if we were going to the next one up to add three more classrooms, you're probably talking about around a little over 700, we might guess would be somewhere around 700 would be kind of adding one more classroom to each, each grade level. And then you break that down to the teams. I hope that makes sense.
Karen? Okay, please don't hate me. Um, well, so first of all, obviously, our, you know, the average square footage per student has changed over the course of time because of the way we teach. So yes, this building might have accommodated 700 in the ways we used to teach and doesn't now. So that I get that, you know, doesn't, doesn't work as well structurally. I also had my children at Glenville Elementary School before it was broken down and redone. Because it was built in the old style of 70s open aired classrooms, because that's how they taught when that building was done. It clearly did not serve the needs of the school population going forward. So my concern is, you know, and this is a quick question for you, Mr. Healy. You know, I know you were talking about doing it based on a teaming model. I understand the focus on making sure we have enough. The scheduling works based on cafeteria size. But I don't know how long we're, you know, the teaming model is something we've done now, but in 50 years, we may not use the teaming model. So you know, that, when we started to lay the building out, you know, by grade level or however you want to do it, you want to talk about flex space. You know, is it the best way for us to look at the student population now because it's based on a teaming model? That's my only quick question because again, that was how Glenville was done. I use not teaming model. It was done in the 1970s style of how they worked their schedules. And that obviously didn't last for more than 50 years. So just out of curiosity.
No, I, I think it's a great question because again, I don't know that teaming will be around, you know, necessarily in the way that it is now. I will say that, you know, the way I also think about it is the kids are still going to be between ages 10 and 14. And typically those are kind of very different needs at this age group. So just the idea that the grades have sort of their own area of the building emanating off of this, you know, more centralized common learning space, I think is a, is a nice model. I think it's a lasting model. Just because, you know, the idea of grade bands and working as a grade. So whether it's teaming or not teaming, at least having that third of the population in a common area is beneficial for, for collaboration of students, for, you know, collaboration of staff who are focused on that one age band. So again, I, I don't necessarily know what we're going to see in 50 or 75 years, but you know, the kids are still going to be ages 10 through 14 in the building and, and the idea of structuring around their, their age peers, at least for now is something, but that goes to another point, of course, which is we have students who are accelerating in math and other areas who are already integrating into higher level classes with older students. So again, I think you know, the teaming model might not be here, but you know, having these groupings of classrooms to organize students in this way, I think makes sense. You know, from a larger perspective, I think in other areas, not just the teaming model.
I was going to go with the Family Feud. Good answer, good answer. So thank you, because I think that that really definitely helps support it. It's not just about a teaming model. It's about the way we, we look at students at this age and how they learn and how they connect. And I think that that is something that will continue for the next 50 plus years. As long as we make sure, again, I know we focus on some swing spaces in case you do have more overlap, as you were mentioning, some of the younger students working in higher grade levels, et cetera. I'm all good.
Ms. Downey?
Just taking the sense of the room, just to move the discussion along. I think I'm, I'm feeling personally, and people can agree or disagree, that we're feeling like 700 is feeling like a, a number that might be a better starting point.
I might be nice of that, but yeah.
But I'm, I think there's a, there's a balance, right? As we've talked about balance, you know, I don't think building it to 800 is wise because it's not there. But if we, you know, the numbers may lay out once they kind of crunch them to say how many classrooms and how it works out. But to me, to go back to the consultants and say, let's target 700, revise the ed specs, come back to us and we can have a discussion and and see where we are. I think a lot of our questions were answered. And to me, that seems like, you know, obviously can get into the beating a dead horse category, but I think we wanted to have this as a primary focus of our discussion tonight because we're still going to have to have further discussions. So I think if we come to a number or a ballpark, a ballpark number and that we're all comfortable with, or a majority of us are, then I think we can go from there.
I think that's right. I think, I think we also need to like get all the other big picture ideas out so that we really could next week have a vote that will include it coming back to us every other month or something because we are forming this building committee. And the only thing that's really going to happen over the summer is them hiring an architect, but we need to start that process. Michael Joseph?
So to that point of. So to that point of other big picture, um, issues, Dr. Jones, I don't know if you've, um, had any more conversations about uh, special ed programs and, and infrastructure around that and the ad specs, that's as far as bringing other things online.
We've talked a little bit about it and I, I think that if we're going up to seven hundred, we're probably going to have space that would be usable if we needed to add a program. I, I do think, and I, and I'm sure that Roger will look at that from a space perspective, that we may need some smaller resource rooms with the large classrooms, if, if you go to seven hundred. Okay, the other things, okay, sorry, Cody, who's that?
I just that if we're getting it quoted at seven hundred, I think the most useful thing to know is where the decisions are at the margin. So it's if it's seven hundred and we went to six thirty, these are the things that come out. If it's seven hundred and you go to seven thirty, these are the things you add, because that's how we'll probably be able to calibrate where we want to be. Because it's, you know, oh, going to seven thirty, all you need is this one more little thing, then why not? But if it's, I think, because we're gonna, we have a ballpark, but we need to be able to understand how to decide it, you know, in the margin.
Agreed, Joe.
Well, that's a good, uh, good observation. So should we conclude here with a range? Bit offer spread?
Sure.
Let's get a number, you're shooting for eight hundred, nine hundred, which is the high side.
I was not shooting that high.
Why don't we call it six fifty, seven fifty is what we're looking at, as a range?
I think that actually sounds good to me.
That makes sense.
So let's conclude with the range six fifty, seven fifty.
I like that. Wait, can we bounce that off Tom? Is it, because six sixty was his magic number?
So, so actually, I, I, we were just kind of thinking about this, Roger, Fran and I. So I, I think the next one, again, just in terms of the easiest efficient organization would be jumping to seven twenty. Um, and then maybe if you wanted to go on the high side of that, adding another sixty to seven eighty. I think the, that, that um, iteration of sixty, which is basically twenty per grade or ten per team, kind of helps us, um, just in terms of efficiencies with class sizes. Again, it's never even, but it's just helpful to, to run these numbers. So if we were going to do that, I would say, and Roger and Fran, please, uh, jump in, but I would say seven eighty might be the high side, just for the sake of us trying to run this model down to whatever number you have, does that sound right?
I, I agree, I think that, uh.
That's gonna be too high.
But, but it's helpful to know just for, you know, it, it gives you context for the range.
That's true.
We could run a, we could run a six sixty, a seven twenty and a seventy.
Was it sixty, six ninety, I thought it was six sixty then to six ninety?
No, seven twenty.
A six sixty then to a seven twenty and then to a seven eighty. And of course, when you're doing that, you know, everything will obviously change in terms of um, additional rooms with regard to many things. I mean, you know, i- if you're going to run, I'll give an example, you know, you, you go up to a, a seven eighty, you're going to need an additional art room at that point. Um, because we're, we're masked right now.
Is, is it? Is the way to think about when we say seven eighty, is that really any number of students above seven twenty? Or is that, like, if, if you're at seven fifty, if you have seven hundred and fifty students, do you need a building built for seven twenty or building built for seven eighty?
Because don't you?
Well, I, I think, I think the easiest way, the reason why we're going in those numbers is because if you go from, if you, i- if I add ten kids per grade or thirty overall, I can make it work. It's maybe not comfortable in certain periods or certain classes, but I can make it work. Once you kick up to that next level, which is why we were going by increments of sixty, that's when I really need a new space. So if you really want to get a sense of space and where we are, again, from an efficiency and, and comfort size, so to speak, um, doing the increments of, of sixty just helps us say that's when we're bumping into the next need for more space. And to Fran's point, I do think once we're getting north of seven hundred, I think we're really looking at a second art room. Um.
You have to think about whenever you're bumping up a- as a, you know, Tom and I have a lot of experience with master scheduling and what you have to remember is you have to have so many elective learning spaces, which means, you know, you have to count. Oh yeah, I have three spaces for, for gym class, I have one health, I have one art, I have two spaces for music, I have, you know, you have to have a certain amount during every single period available for a certain amount of kids. And so once you increase, it's not just about regular classrooms, it's about elective learning spaces and where those kids will be each period. So, um, you know, as you move up, you may max out on certain areas. And so now, you know, like I said, we definitely have maxed out in art. So anything that we go up on now after six sixty, we will definitely need an additional art room. That's just one example. Um, so, you know, those are the kinds of things that we consider.
So I think this is kind of what we were talking about last meeting where I sort of said, you know, you have your base case and you have your stretch case, right? So, I mean, so is it a lot of? I mean, I assume this is, I, I'm sorry to be simple about this, but is this not like an Excel spreadsheet where I mentioned it last time, where we could just sort of have another art room is going to cost us X because now that we're at seven eighty? I, I wouldn't mind like looking at it like that.
I, I understand the point of comparison, but if we don't think seven eighty is really a number that we're going to work with, we maybe shouldn't be creating work for the consultants. Like if we really think we're kind of in the six sixty, seven twenty, maybe like a two.
Because seven twenty is really seven fifty as well.
Right, exactly.
Seven eighty, seven eighty, or is that?
Seven eighty because pushes you close to eight hundred.
I think seven eighty, seven fifty one.
But when you have seven hundred twenty-five students, are you, like, does that fit, is that fit into the seven twenty building?
But that would be, that's what Tom said.
I think he's saying it would go to seven fifty.
Yes.
Be a little bit of a cushion.
I, I think, yeah, I think, I think again, you know, if you're looking at seven twenty, we could probably even make seven, you know, seven thirty, forty, maybe even seven fifty work. Um, again, the, the trick is, is it, it depends on, on where the distribution is by grade level, no grade level is exactly even, right? We're saying these numbers as if it's even, it's not even, right? It's not going to be two twenty, two twenty, two twenty, if we're at six hundred and sixty, it's going to be maybe, you know, two sixty in one grade and, and less. So that's what makes it really tough. So we're, we're trying to give round numbers for the sake of trying to have a sense of what this building could look like. But in, in real life, to Fran's point, um, you have to get down to the very specific learning spaces and how many children are in each grade and where they need to be. So there's enough wiggle room, I think, when you're in the range of adding thirty or so students to our estimate. Once you get north of that, it might become a little bit more tricky in terms of, of mapping everything out, so.
All right, so that sounds like we should just six sixty and seven twenty.
Well, yeah, and also too, as we get a tighter spread, we get closer to a deal. So why don't we settle on the spread, we're now six sixty, seven twenty, we're not going lower than six sixty, do we all agree? We're not going any higher than seven twenty, do we all agree?
Right, am I buying from you?
We have a range.
I mean, I still would be in favor of getting the information on it because I think it's useful to know, but on the seven eighty, uh, to have an upper bound, especially when you think about once you know what's there, you can then evaluate what the option value is of, of extra space, that's not saying you should have it just.
Do you suggest that we back the offer up to seven eighty? So now our bid market is six sixty, seven eighty.
He was saying three scenarios, like, yeah.
Well, the middle range is always a scenario within a bid offer spread.
Right.
Correct.
That's probably where we end up.
Let's pick a range and move on and then address it once we get further information.
How much, how much work is it to do the seven eighty?
A lot more, is that, is that why you're telling us that?
Uh, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it's, Tom and I will go through each scenario and we will, um, go through, you know, we have to count the periods, count the date, you know, we, it's just a matter of going through each scenario. That's all we have, you know, one more scenario, that's all. And then what we do is we, we talk to Roger and Roger increases the cafeteria space and and he worries more about square footage and that kind of thing. And we kind of tell him what we need at that point, based on, um, how we'll schedule the building.
So, so can I make a suggestion? Maybe before we worry about revisions to this document, they come back to us basically with a chart with the three scenarios. We have a discussion, make a decision, and then the ad specs can be revised consistent with whatever our decision is. That seems to me the most efficient. Thumbs up, I like that.
Yeah, how long do you think this would take?
So, so let me, let me pipe in here. Uh, the revision really would only have to occur on the final three pages of the template. Okay, so in other words, we won't touch the document in terms of the narrative and, and all the specifications. But what we can give you is the data in terms of how many spaces and sizes of them and, and on the, the last three pages of the template. We can give you three sets of those, one for six sixty, one for seven twenty and one for seven eighty. And then once you've had your discussion and decided which one you want to go with, then we'll revise the rest of the document to fit whichever one you decide.
So could, in theory, could we, how, how fast could we get those three pages? Because I'm just trying to figure, lay out our next week.
I think we could have them in a week.
But then, we can, we can vote the following week, don't worry about voting next week, we gotta do this right.
I, I agree, but I want to keep us on schedule because I feel like.
So.
I will be doing this call from vacation, but that's fine, okay. Okay, so why don't we, let me, let me wrap this up here, well, then we're going to keep going, but on, in terms of this, so we're looking at three scenarios, six sixty, seven twenty, seven eighty. Um, you would think that within the next week, you would be able to send us, um, those three scenarios. We could then get a virtual meeting um, on the calendar for some time next week, at which point we can make a decision on that base scenario. And, yep, and then, um, bring it for a vote probably right after the fourth of July.
My point is, oh, my point, if he says it's going to take him a week, next week, that brings us into, next Thursday night, for instance, we have graduation. If there's, there's the rain plan, so that would be two nights. So you're probably actually looking at the start of the following week, because if they're not.
For Wednesday?
What's the, what's the rain scenario, if it rains, is it all day on Thursday or is it Wednesday and Thursday night? You, you can't overlap this with.
There's nothing on Wednesday, so I'm just trying to.
But I don't, if, if it, what's the scenario if it rains for graduation? It's what?
You want to go earlier, would you? Graduation earlier if you think it's going to rain on a Thursday. So I'm just, yeah, so I'm wondering if we could have, is there any chance you guys would be ready on the twenty second?
Um, hang on. Yes, we could be ready by the twenty second.
Okay, yeah, so we will meet Wednesday night virtually. The, it shouldn't be long, hopefully, well, 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 it's, it's, you know, it's numbers, right? So good sense from everyone. Um, I mean, I guess I should probably put it on as sort of a vote, I mean, it's not a vote of the ad specs, it's a vote on the numbers, we're gonna have to be sort of affirmative about it. Yep. What, yeah, but that's not at like four o'clock, right? I think we could, you know, let's three thirty to five thirty. So we could do something, how do you guys feel about, you know, six thirty or something virtually? June twenty second? I know I'm supposed to be doing this during agenda planning, but this is where I went. Okay, generally it looks okay.
I can't, but I'll send written notes before.
Yeah, okay, you sure, okay. Yeah, is there a time that would work?
After seven thirty.
That's fine, well, I mean, look, what time is it now, ten thirteen, we're like nine and halfway through our meeting.
We're not?
So what, you want to do eight, Cody, seven thirty eight?
Eight's probably safer.
Okay, let's do eight.
That's, so.
Is that okay?
I, I don't want to be the holdup, I think.
It's okay, I mean, it's important that you're there.
It's on Zoom, we can do it in our pajamas.
So let's, I'm sorry, Roger, is that okay for you guys, Roger, Fran, eight PM on June twenty second?
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Um, so that's, so if you guys come back and then we'll have, sort of make a decision on numbers that night. Is there any, and then also in that, that's when we're going to sort of put an amendment in the ad spec that it's a requirement for the building committee to come back and report to the board at least every other month. Um, there are big picture things that I know we wanted to hear.
And, and so I would just say, like, after we do that, we'll get one final version of the ad specs to work at before the vote, correct?
Yeah, but then we'll get it, but then I think the next meeting will be the vote.
Right, but it would be, ideally we get it uh, sufficiently in advance of the vote, so that if there are little things that we want to address, it would be an opportunity, so we're not doing wordsmithing in the middle of a meeting.
Okay, yes. And again, that's why I think it's, this amendment is also important, so you don't feel like you're saying goodbye to it. Yes, Karen?
So this is just a process question. Um, you know, obviously we, we want to pick the right size number, obviously then we have, may have a few final questions. Um, I think part of the confusion that we've had is because we didn't have, a lot of the detail that we've been asking for is usually what comes in a feasibility study, which we didn't have because we had a lot of the details from before. I know questions that Joe and I answered, were asking last time, might have come from a feasibility document. So if going forward, we're going to change the process slightly to ask for the building committee to present to us more frequently, the question then becomes if we approve these ads specs, we send them off to an architect to come back to us with the design. Can we, you know, I, I know technically, once you agree to ad specs, that's, that's that, you can't change them once.
Yes, you can.
So my point is if we go forward with this, we send it off to an architect, they come back to us and we then decide you need to make a revision because you need a second story on.
Actually, I have an idea, Karen, but, yeah. So here's the, here's the, if we, we, we could, what we could do is, and we'll just figure out, we could approve the ad specs for the purposes of handing them off to the building committee. In that meantime, while, because they're going to have to go out and hire an architect, which is a time, they have to put out an RFP, it's a time consuming process. We have to approve the architect during that period of time. If there is tweaking, you know, little minor things, we will have probably a good six weeks between the RFP and then hiring the architect. If we wanted to make additional, if we wanted, if we kind of feel like we can't give the baby away just yet, um, we'll, we have time before they actually start engaging in any meaningful work. So it's not that we're, you know, we're kissing it goodbye, but we can hand it out and say, this is what you can use to hire an architect. We'll be maybe doing some minor refining in the meantime and we can vote on it.
I just, just on the off chance that we said, we see, realize we've missed something, so that makes me feel more confident.
Thank you, Kelly.
This is exactly on that topic and I'm going to use visuals, if you may entertain me. Right now, we're handing off to the building committee, a design of the building that looks similar to this. Okay, what we used to do is we used to set, give the building committee a design that might look like this. We're not doing that. So what we might get back, the old way, we would get back something like this, and, and that's satisfactory, because it's kind of close. Without giving guidance, we might get this and that would not be satisfactory. So we'd be further away from a conclusion than we would have been in the old process because we gave them and voted on a design like this, and they came back, the building committee, with something that looked something like this. So I'm afraid we're going to give no design plans and come back with something like this when we all wanted this.
So I think we're, again, I think we're getting a little bit confused, so that will be something that will come back to us that has not yet been designed. Right now, we're just talking about the internal spaces, right? That will come back.
Back to us with the design, where in the past.
Yeah, the architect will, right.
But we're giving them no guidelines, we're giving them nothing other than ad specs. They could build the building like a triangle as opposed to.
In the past, when like, when there's a, a, yeah, but no, we don't put, we didn't vote on the design till after the building committee had moved down, I'm just using the high school today.
Feasibility committee voted on the.
The feasibility, but the board never did. The board doesn't vote on the feasibility.
I'll say it again, correct, no, the, the board votes on the feasibility, submits the design. You get several choices, you look at the set like we did with Old Greenwich School. We looked at a bunch of different choices for the design changes in Old Greenwich School, same with JC. We looked at design, we voted on one and so we kind of want it to look like this. And then the building committee says, okay, the Board of Education voted on this, absolutely, one hundred percent. Karen, maybe you can correct me, you, uh, you, uh, served on, you served on the Old Greenwich Building Committee, did you have?
Karen Kowalski.
Yes. Didn't you have a variety of different design proposals that you put in front of the board for a vote, like a number of three or four of them? I know we did at JC and, uh, uh, I remember doing them for Old Greenwich.
We weren't actually voting on the design then.
You, well, you're not stuck, you're not, you're not.
Because we're not, like, I'm just using the high school today, we had, we could have hired an entirely new architect and done a completely new design.
Correct, but you had a first architect come and do a proposal, the board.
No, that's what I'm saying, so no, nothing is binding, nothing would bind a committee that did a feasibility study.
Showed them what we wanted.
That's, yeah, but that's just an idea, it's not a what we wanted.
An idea, to use your words, we presented them with an idea.
That, that was in the feasibility, that's what I said, that was the step that we didn't have. Ed specs does not typically have that.
No, ad specs.
We usually get, no, but you, in the feasibility, there was just like a little, a little drawing that says, this is what it could look like, this is conceptual. Then it goes to ad specs, just kind of lay out what you need in there, and then from the ad specs, it goes off to an architect. And then they come back, and that's when we kind of hack away and it said, yeah, no, like, that.
But Joe, if you're, if you're concerned, the, all building committee meetings are public. If you want to go to the building committee meetings and see when they're interviewing architects and what the architects propose. We're all, any member of the community has the ability to do so. And if we're not comfortable with it, then we can have a discussion about it.
Which is why they're gonna keep coming back.
Or we could do like we used to do and propose what we kind of want to do and give them.
But we don't have a clue, because we have to have the architect help us.
The problem, we're giving them a blank sheet of paper and say.
Because we need to have a professional architect sort of come back to us with ideas. I mean, I can't tell you if it should be a triangle or a square until a professional tells me.
Past, in a feasibility study, you have several options that they present to you.
Right, but then you go to.
Vote on it and say, okay, building committee, hire your own architect, and this is kind of the way we.
Yes, how many of those have actually been buildings?
But once it goes to the building committee and they hire an architect and the architect drafts something, they bring to us proposal. But we then have the, the yayer name to make changes then. That's all, I, I think that's why I was asking what the.
Guideline of this, they're not gonna come back with this. They're gonna come back with this.
I'm pretty sure they're gonna come back with something that's more rectangular.
Possibly.
Triangular, just a theory.
But it just, and I, I might be the minority here, and I do apologize, but we're not giving them any design guidance. Causing a delay in the future when they come to us with something.
I disagree, Joe. Joe, not a single one of us is a professional architect on this board. We have no idea aesthetically what we want. So we can't give them, we can't give them guidance, because we don't.
We always have.
It seems like we have a strong preference for squares.
We, we always have in the past, this is the process that's changing. The change of the process is we're not giving the building committee any concept of what we have approved. We always would.
The building committee gets that what, they have to hire the architect, the architect knows how many. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain, right? So the architect looks at these ad specs, they know we need whatever, thirty. Some odd classrooms, we need this size of an auditorium, we need this, that. They draft that plan, and then the, the building committee looks at it. But we have the ultimate say when it comes back from the building committee. They can make a recommendation, and use a board say, yeah, I don't like it, it's triangular, I want squares.
Into building something that's absolutely wrong.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I, I think that's, you have, but that's why we're gonna have lots of steps in the process. That's why I'm changing it to sort of say, listen, because you're right, maybe the feasibility thing, that, that's, at the same time, it seems like. There was a concept that could add a new lab, but it looks nothing like it from the first to the end. So, um, I think that the process really didn't work in the end anyway, but.
I'll make, at my end, the final statement, you guys can comment on it. The process that we're abandoning and going to a different one was probably put into place for a reason. And the reason it was put into place was to give some sort of guidelines to the building committee and the new architect. To develop something that was already approved by the Board of Education. I'm not gonna answer, so you can say whatever you want, I'm just not gonna answer. That's my concluding remark.
And I can, I respectfully disagree that the new architect you hired for a building was not bound at all by what design a feasibility committee.
Okay, I think we made lots of progress on the numbers.
Can I ask you a question about something Christine said? Was your point that we could vote now to just get the process started for hiring an architect and then go revisit it? Cause that.
We have to present education specifications to the building committee. They'll have their organizational meeting, they'll, um, appoint their officers. And their first task is to hire an architect. In order to hire an architect, they have to put out the RFP and go through the town processes, which takes weeks, right? So during their organizational time and the hiring of an architect. They will, we will have time to tweak these. However, when they go out to bid on an architect, they've got to have the scope of the project. So they're gonna need something to have the process of hiring an architect. So you can't give them nothing.
Are they currently delayed while we deliberate or?
They only just performed on Monday, and they actually have not even had their organizational meeting yet.
The first selection has thirty days to convene.
Yes, they once we, they had to get together.
There's no money for them to do it, there's, there's no money for their budget till after July one anyway.
But that's why I am kind of like, let's, let's go, you know? We, we wanted, yes, we're building something for the generations. At the same time, I was joking with my caucus the other day. This is like software development. We would keep developing the software, but at one point, we actually have to get it to market.
So we do this in our, if we, if we provide them with ad specs in early July, we would not have sold them down.
But that's why I'm.
So instead of asking, unless there's very specific, just to try to move this forward, because we're barely halfway through the agenda. And my, uh, my actual student at home is begging me to give her some help with some schoolwork, and I'm here. Um, so my question to you is, you know, can, you know, are there any major questions that we need to ask tonight? Or if they're bringing back the numbers, we're gonna meet next week, can we ask any more detailed questions that night? We'll have a better idea then, and then we can.
Uh, yes, although I would hope that this document was the bulk of our questions. And I got all the answers. I mean, the other thing I was gonna say, when I looked through the big pieces, it was energy that you want, wanting to make sure that it was, we're being as energy efficient as possible. That's obvious, but you make that sort of a big category. Fields, something that we're gonna be very concerned with, and we want to make sure it meets, you know, our park and rec and our, our, obviously our sport, sporting requirements. Security, should be the best security. Size, we talked about, flex space, right? And then the outside theater. Those were kind of the big concepts I sort of saw. And I think that we should, we would probably all be like, yes. I mean, you know, I think the key to the ad spec is put everything you want in there, it'll only likely be removed, right? So I think it's better that you, you know, put it all in, and then we'll take it from there. So those are, I kind of give you those five, six bullets, and, uh, then we'll come back with size next Wednesday. Makes sense? All right. Yes, Michael Joseph.
Ready to move on?